Thank you for having me.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's the appointed hour. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Study Session for this Monday, September twenty second, twenty third, rather, two thousand and twenty four. We have four significant items for discussion tonight, the first of which is a review of the West Pierce Fire and Rescue Benefits Charge Presentation. Chief, Chief Jim Sharp.
Thank you. I appreciate taking time to do the presentation.
And oh, thank you. I learned a little bit more about what we are proposing at West Pierce Fire and Rescue. So, uh, let's see. Hold please. There we go. So this evening, I'd like to take just a little bit of your time to talk about what a fire benefit charge is. Um, and what's important is to take a moment and talk a little bit about what's happening, which is on November fifth. Uh, we have a ballot measure asking voters to consider a new method of funding for the fire department. What's more important to know, I think, for the community is what's not happening. Uh, we're not asking for more money or a new taxing method on top of what already exists. This is just a change in our funding model. Um, and I think that's important because, as you know, our community has consistently, uh, supported our maintenance and operations levy. They just supported it last year. It was on the ballot measure. So when they were on the ballot, they typically assume we're asking for support for a ballot measure this, uh, that that funds more services. Um, this is not a new tax on top of what exists. This is simply changing the way in which we do it, and I'll explain a little bit about that. Um, first off, uh, if if fire benefit charge is, uh, approved in November, uh, starting in two thousand and twenty five, it will reduce property taxes by eliminating our maintenance and operations levy. And also reducing statutory, uh, levy rate of our regular levy by thirty three percent. Uh, currently, the fire department is funded by three different, uh, types of property taxes, an EMS levy, a regular levy, and our maintenance and operations levy. And what we are proposing is to change that. We would still have an EMS levy. But as I said, our regular levy would be reduced by thirty three percent. The statutory rate would go down, and then also our fire benefit charge would be eliminated, or our maintenance operation levy would be eliminated. And the third leg of it would now become a fire benefit charge. So, as I said, a, a fire benefit charge is quite different than what we've done. Our community's historically supported at our ma- our maintenance operations level for some fifty years now. Uh, fire benefit charge, though, however, is not a tax. It's a, it's a fee, which sounds like, you know, maybe we're just talking semantics here, but there is a fundamental difference in that not not being a tax. Uh, the fact that it's not a tax, it's not based on the property's value. It has nothing to do with the property's assessed value. Uh, and it doesn't care about raw land or or any of the land property. It just cares about the physical structures on the on the property. And that fee is calculated, again, not by assessed value, but it's it's based on primarily three things. The size of the structure that's there, what it's used for, and what its fire risk is. F B C is generally, it considers that those who require more, uh, fire protection services should pay that equitable share to support those services and that service demand. And I'll talk a little bit about how some of that service demand is different amongst different, uh, types of buildings in our community. Last summer, uh, a couple of months ago, we had three fires that that were just within a few days of each other. There was a residential home fire, an apartment fire, and then we had a large commercial structure, uh, fire. So they're very good, uh, three very different and distinct categories within the fire benefit charge matrices. And so, uh, the first one is our res- uh, we wanted to look at was, um, how many apparatus does it take to bring a fire under control? How many fire engines, engine companies, ladder companies, medic units, um, chief officers, all those different pieces of apparatus? And for the residential fire, it took, uh, twelve different pieces of apparatus to bring that fire into control. However, uh, in a apartment building, there's, you know, more more building, more, um, you know, connected residences, so there's more to search, more to evacuate, more to, um, you know, get the fire put out and get smoke put out and laddering of the building. Typically, they're multi-story, et cetera. So we had nineteen units at that fire. However, the commercial fire was substantially more. We had forty different apparatus that were involved in bringing that fire under control. Uh, our fire engines have three people on them. Our medic units and squads have two, uh, obviously different number of people for each apparatus. So in total, when you look at the number of people that responded to these three different fires, uh, we had twenty four people, uh, that responded to the home fire. And thirty six that were at the apartment fire, but double that again, and it took seventy eight, almost eighty people to bring the, uh, commercial fire under control. When you look at out of service hours, now taking all those pieces of apparatus that were there, some get cleared, uh, rather quickly, you know, maybe a medic unit is only there for a shorter amount of time, but the fire engine has to stay longer. Chief officer's clear a little bit earlier. So there's different amounts of times that each piece of apparatus is there, but when we can relatively look at that, and we we calculated the the amount of ser- out of service time for all of the apparatus on scene. Uh, collectively, it was twenty hours of out of service time for all the apparatus that were there at the house fire. Um, substantially more when you look at a, an apartment fire, because it takes a lot longer to bring things under control. It takes more apparatus. It starts to multiply exponentially. Uh, and it was seventy five hours for the, um, apartment fire and over three hundred hours of out of service time for the apparatus that were committed to the commercial fire. So that's three hundred hours that we had vehicles that were committed to just one incident, uh, out of their first due response area, unable to respond to other calls. They had to stay committed just to that one incident. Again, uh, all those pieces of apparatus have people on them, uh, that takes those people out of service from doing other calls, running other calls. And and when you start to look at the number of staff hours that get committed to these different types of structures, uh, it's substantially different. Uh, the residential house fire, we had a total commitment of twenty nine hours for our personnel that were on scene. Um, but the multifamily, because you have a lot more apparatus, they're there a lot longer, all of it starts to, again, grow exponentially. We had a hundred and forty five hours of staff hours committed to that apartment fire. And over six hundred hours were committed to the commercial fire, uh, more than two thousand percent increase over what a residential house fires. It's the equivalent of twenty home fires collectively. Is what the resources that were utilized to to manage just that one fire in that commercial building. So again, when you start to talk about a fire benefit charge, it it looks at it in in a in a quanti- quantification of those who benefit the most from fire protection services should pay some kind of equitable share to support the amount of services that they require for that fire protection. So when we look at our current funding model, as I said, we have three different, uh, legs. The funding model, our EMS levy, our regular levy, and our M and O levy, they're all property tax funded, so they're all based on the value of your property. That's set by the assessor treasurer. And these are two homes in our fire district currently. Uh, they're they're actual properties that exist. They're about twenty six hundred square feet, which is, you know, um, fairly close to the average size home within, uh, the West Pierce community. Uh, however, if you notice, one of them is assessed at just under five hundred thousand dollars. And the other one, uh, because it has a view of Puget Sound, is assessed at one point five million dollars. So currently, under the current system, uh, even though they're the same size homes, same use, same fire risk, uh, the home on the right pays fi- or three times as much to the fire department, because all of the payments are based strictly on, uh, assessed value. Uh, under the, under the, uh, fire benefit charge model, both homes would pay the exact same fire benefit charge, because again, same size, same risk, same use. Um, with that said, though, um, to be clear, both homes would still pay a different amount, because we would still have the EMS levy and a portion of our, our, um, current, uh, regular levy still applied to it. So there are some factors that are still, um, based on assessed value. There are property taxes that we can't change. There's there's a limitation on this. We can't just say, let's get rid of all of our property taxes and just go to fire benefit charge. That's not an option within state law. One of the other challenges we have is not just the disparity between the residential home market, but also, uh, when you start to compare residential homes to commercial buildings, uh, like I was saying in that earlier example, commercial buildings have a whole lot of different risks. Uh, they're typically much larger. They have different fire risks. They, um, they have oftentimes, uh, a combination of different businesses in them, industrial work and processes. There could be hazardous materials and and a lot of different things that have to be addressed. In this example, we have the same residential home from earlier, the View Home, that's, uh, one point five million dollar assessed value. And next to it is a, a commercial building that's in, uh, West Pierce, uh, thirteen thousand, six hundred square feet, so it's more than five times the size of that residential home. It has multiple industrial uses inside one building and a lot of fire hazard. Yet, because it's in an industrial area that isn't real pretty and doesn't have, you know, nice manicured lawns or views of Puget Sound, it's it's actually appraised at one point five million dollars. So because both properties are praised the same, they both pay the fire district currently the same amount, um, for, uh, fire protection services, even though the commercial building, as I said, is is five times as large as the residential home. And, uh, and along with it has a lot different associated fire risks. So, again, what we're proposing is a, a shift from what has been really a, a fundamental way of funding our fire department for some fifty years. Um, and a lot of this is driven by, um, what we are hearing from the community and, you know, a desire to see some reduction in in property taxes. Um, they're not necessarily just mad that, you know, that we charge them property taxes, kind of a collective. In the, in the state of Washington, as you know, uh, property taxes are utilized to fund a lot of services. And so, uh, collectively, there's a lot of leveraging, uh, of of the, um, residential homeowners', um, homes against their their value. And we hear a lot that people are looking for property tax relief, and this is one way within state law that we are allowed to change from a property tax-based, uh, funding model to something else, which is the fire benefit charge. So if this is approved in November, uh, we would see a one hundred percent reduction in our maintenance and operations levy. It would just go away. And we would see a thirty three percent reduction in statutory rate of our regular levy as well. Um, so we've, we've run some cost modeling. Um, of course, we don't know what, uh, Assessor Treasurer will do in two thousand and twenty five. We can't, you know, speak to that specifically, but we just did cost modeling based on two thousand and twenty four. If we would have had the fire benefit charge in place in two thousand and twenty four, um, the vast majority of residential homeowners would see a decrease in, uh, what they, uh, pay to the fire department in totality. That, uh, you know, is not a hundred percent, and it's really hard when you're you're dealing with assessed values and something that's set by the Assessor Treasurer's office, and it changes year to year. We can't speak in absolutes. But had we had it in place this year, um, our estimates are that about eighty percent of the homeowners in, uh, West, West Pierce would have seen a reduction in their, their total payment to the fire department. Um, there's a couple of things in the slide that I do want to make sure that I do mention, uh, or in the slide program that I I do want to make sure I do mention, and that is, um, as far as, um, exemptions. Those who have property tax exemptions today for specific reasons such as, you know, disability or age, um, or, you know, financial income, those same disabilities apply, or those same, uh, exemptions apply for fire benefit charges they would for property taxes. So those would get carried over just the same as they are today. Um, and, uh, like I say, I I think this is a, it's it's a, um, it's a good solution to try and address what we are hearing from the community, which is they're they're looking for some level of property tax relief. This does that, uh, while still funding the fire department at the same levels. We're not looking to increase the amount of money we get. We're not looking to decrease it. It will be the same amount of operating funds as what we're looking to to move forward with. But do it in such a way that we calculate it differently and apply it differently than how we've done in the past. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Thank you, Chief. Questions? Oh, Mr. Brantstone.
Well, I want to thank the chief for, for, for being here and and for the staff and, uh, I assume the your commissioners for being willing to to do this and choosing to put this on the ballot. You know, the fact that we've been totally funding the fire department with property taxes for decades, okay? Doesn't mean, given the disparate costs of responding to different buildings, is, isn't incredibly stupid the way we're doing it. That, um, so this makes, uh, you know, a good sense in terms of equalizing cost and benefit, uh, amongst people to do that. Uh, the chief didn't mention it, but because I've had the occasion to to hear this before and heard the questions asked that with property taxes, there are some low-income elderly folks and some folks who are disabled that have with that, uh, e- e- exceptions to property taxes, and they're not doing that. But my understanding is, is that those same folks that have that exceptions to their property tax based on those statuses would also have an exception to paying all or a percentage of the fire benefit charge.
Correct.
Um, and so, so, so that's another thing that doesn't change. Uh, the, the, the one thing that I guess that I would just ask for some clarification on is that I certainly understand that in two thousand and twenty five, if it is approved by the voters, that they would uh, uh, adjust how the payments are made, uh, that the Assessor Treasurer would do it, and that he would be looking to make sure that he collects the same amount of money that he does now. He's just going to divide it up differently based on the fire benefit calculations. Um, that, uh, the current levy that is being replaced is voted on every periodically, uh, by, uh, by voters, and they assume that they both they they vote for what's the total amount of money for the number of years that the levy would be there. Uh, how does that, say, when we get to two thousand and twenty seven, and there's a, there's a need to adjust the amount of money that is being collected by the fire benefit charge, is that still a vote that is put on the ballot by the fire commissioners, or is it moved to a more administrative process?
It it's a little of both, uh, Councilmember Brantstone. Uh, first of all, uh, this would place the, uh, the, uh, would establish the fire benefit charge. This vote on November fifth would place the fire benefit charge enacted for six years, which is the shortest amount of time you can do a fire benefit charge. So we opted for the shortest amount of time, which is six years. Uh, so it does have to get renewed. It's not a permanent thing. It does have to get renewed in the future. But in the interim, though, um, there are, uh, there is a process, an annual process that the Board of Fire Commissioners have to undertake, in which they have a public hearing and discuss the fire benefit charge and make decisions about any changes that would happen to the fire benefit charge. So there's actually more touch points for the community to be involved in the process through a public hearing process. And and that's something where they would, uh, annually have to do that as part of the fire benefit charge, uh, methodology, which is not something that currently exists under the, um, the maintenance and operations levy process. Uh, we do have our public hearings for our budget, but this would be a secondary piece. It's a public hearing for the bud- we still have our public hearings for the annual budget. But we would also have to have, uh, public hearings annually with the community to discuss the fire benefit charge and any changes that would be enacted within, uh, the, either the, the rate or how it is dispersed, or in in any fluctuations to the formula itself.
So in future years, though, the total amount of money that is, needs to be connected by the fire benefit charge wouldn't be through a ballot measure. It would be through a a, a process that ultimately is voted on by the fire commissioners.
Uh, cor- on an annual, on an annual basis, correct. They do a public hearing, and then that would be adopted, uh, by the fire commissioners through a public hearing.
So it's, no, it's not that similar to the city, you know, what 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 we do in terms of determining what our our tax rate and amount of our taxes is going to be in, in a given year, going every, 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 every year. Uh, with limitations on it. So we're for our, with us, the property tax, we have a state mandated limit, upper limit, by how much it can be increased. Is that, does this, does state law regarding fire benefit charges have such a limit?
Yeah, the, the way it's limited under the state law is a percentage of our operating budget, and it cannot, it cannot exceed more than sixty percent of our operating budget. So that, that's sort of how that limitation is created.
Okay, and so, given the measure that's on the ballot, that if we were to change it in two thousand and twenty five, what's the percentage of the operating budget that would be? If it's going to be exactly the same as replacing what the property tax would have been, is that, I'm sure it's within the sixty percent, but is it significantly less than sixty, or is it right around there?
Yeah, it's, it's less than sixty. I want to say that it's roughly forty five percent. Now, please don't hold me to these numbers. This is my finance director's purview, but, um, it's, it's roughly forty five percent. And that equates to, uh, right now, our, our maintenance and operation levy is about thirty to thirty five percent, depending on the year. So it's got to cover that, and then also the statutory reduction of our regular levy. So it's not exactly apples to apples. It's not just remove the M and O and replace it with F B C. We're actually removing the M and O and a portion of our regular levy, and we have to cover both those with the, the, um, fire benefit charge. So it's a little larger percentage of our total operating budget than the M and O levies, but it's also removing, um, that and a portion of the fire levy tax as well.
Okay, well, I think, and I think your presentation has shown that we're given the expansion of the number and size of commercial buildings in the districts that, um, uh, that the fire benefit charge is going to predominantly move to those buildings that have created greater need for the district to be able to respond. And that it's going to create some benefit for most residential property owners.
I, I think that's a, a, a very fair statement, yes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? I have a few. Is the, will the result if passed on the ballot, will that result in enhanced revenue, or the district over what normal levy would be, or about the same, or the?
No, the intent that this would be just the s- the same. The intent is the same, again, not, not trying to create
Just re-
newer additional taxes, just trying to change the methodology in which we calculate what we collect.
And the fire benefit charge is based upon, uh, calls for services that are more anticipated to be fire-related as opposed to medical service calls, or both?
Correct. The formula is based on a, is 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 based on fire, uh, risk factors. So again, the, the primary measurements of that that we use are, you know, the size of the building, what that building is being used for, and what kind of fire risks does it generate?
Okay. Um, the, the only, as a single-family homeowner, I would be ecstatic to see my tax rate, which is two dollars and sixty eight cents per fire. It's, you know, as you know, the second highest of the iteration of folks who, uh, take money on the property tax. I'd be ecstatic about getting a reduction. My question is, from the allocation, when I think about mobile home parks and apartment dwellers, if the you know, the lion's share appropriately falls on multifamily, some commercials certainly, uh, it it could result in a higher cost of rent as it's passed along from owner to tenant. Has there been much study on that, or thought about other jurisdictions that have implemented the power benefit charge and how it's impacted the cost of housing?
Yeah, and and it's really hard to compare one district to another because the demographics are very different, right? The makeup of percentage of multifamily and commercial, et cetera, et cetera. It's hard to really, you know, find apples to apples with another community. But, um, I will say that, uh, we do have, uh, four different categories in our formula. One is residential, and residential is one to two, uh, family homes. And so we're following along with what the fire code would be essentially, and so- And so one to two family, so duplex are considered residential. And then three to. Three to 19 units would be multifamily. And then it goes into commercial. And so those largest of apartment complexes would fall into the commercial categories.
Okay.
But then what's important is to note that there's a fourth category, which is specifically mobile homes. Because we recognize in our communities that there are a lot of mobile homes and there's a lot of and that's just a different. That's certainly a different fire risk, a different category, a different a different measurement, you know, it's not the same as as we would look at a large apartment complex. So there are some some variations for that and 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 mobile homes are are in a different category and measured and calculated in a different way than than the other categories. And, you know, so so it really depends. I know that's a terrible answer and I I get these kind of questions a lot.
Sounds like a lawyer.
Right? But yeah, I'm talking to a lawyer, so I feel good about this. They. You could have a, you know, a 10,000 square foot, you know, small apartment building in one place and it's assessed at a certain amount. And you could have it in a different place and it could be assessed much higher. And so the one that's much higher maybe doesn't see a big change and maybe the one that's assessed much lower does see a change. Or vice versa. I mean, it just it just depends on where is it assessed today? What what's the value assessed at today? And how does that compare against its current size and 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 how it factors into the fire benefit charge formulas? So it's really a difficult thing to pin down and say that, oh, everyone will react in this same way because they just won't.
No, I appreciate it. I think it's a prudent review and potential methodology. For assessing. Costs for the fire department, certainly the fire district. The, you know, to complicate your life down the road further, you know about the housing density rules that the legislature has passed. So it could be that when you have the thought of a single family residential home, it could actually be. Two single family residential homes and an ADU or two on one single family lot.
Yes.
So that'll make the calculation even even more fun down the road.
Yeah, currently, we haven't we haven't. Looked to do anything different in that arena, but it certainly could be some something that gets modeled into the formula in the future. But that it it it's a question I got actually at the Lake City Community Association, you know, very, you know, you know, proximity of. Yeah, houses being closer together and more on the same lot, you know, how is that going to impact things? So I do think it's it's certainly a future question. It always needs to be evaluated, but right now it is not something that is factored into the formula.
Well, thank you for being innovative. I think it's great.
All right.
You know, a fresh approach and I think the taxpayers will appreciate it, so.
And if I may, because I know a lot of people are watching online and such, so just I did bring this up a little while ago. It has our great. There's more information than anybody in the community wants at westpiercefire.org slash vote. There's a QR code there for folks in the audience that can actually it'll take them to that same website. So I appreciate the time of the council and always happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate it. Okay, next. We have a review of the Tacoma Public Utilities proposed rate adjustment. And hopefully that will be. By multifamily commercial purchases.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Wayland, City Council members. My name is Rosa McLeod. I'm the Regional Relations Director, excuse me, manager. At Tacoma Public Utilities, here to discuss our proposed 2025, 2026 biennial rate adjustments. And I have with me Nathan Schumer. Nathan, would you like to?
I'm Nathan Schumer. I'm a data analyst. I work for Tacoma Power.
Nathan is my phone of friend in case he's our subject matter expert here tonight in case there are questions I'm not able to answer. There we go.
There you go.
Okay. Thank you. So thank you so much for the opportunity to discuss our rate proposed rate adjustments. I do want to underscore that these are proposed from staff like I'm sure Lakewood is in right now. We're TPU is in a budget and rates season. So these are stuff, the rate adjustments that we will discuss tonight are staff proposals that have not yet been finalized by or finally approved by the Public Utility Board. Once they do make the make take that final vote, the the proposals recommendations will go to the Tacoma City Council for final approval. And to be adopted in our 2025, 2026 budget. We're coming to you earlier today in order to give you and our Lakewood customers an opportunity to provide feedback, ask questions. They can do that at mytpu.org. Or they can come to a public hearing at the October 9th Public Utility Board meeting at the on the TPU campus. So just to provide a very extremely brief overview of TPU, we provide power. To about 183,000 customers throughout our service territory, of which 10,269 customers reside in Lakewood. And Tacoma Water provides drinking water to over 108,000 customers throughout our service service territory. We have 33 water customers actually in the city of Lakewood, nine of which are residents. So we'll be discussing residential rates today. Founded in 1893, we are publicly owned. So the slide deck says we don't pay investors and that's because we don't have investors. We charge customers what it costs us to serve them. And all of our funds go into maintaining a safe, reliable service. We are governed by a five member utility board that is appointed. Members are appointed by the utility board and then confirmed by the Tacoma City Council. And Jackie Flowers is our director. She joined us in, I believe, 2018. And then here is a map of our service territory. While we are an X TPU is an extension of the Tacoma City Government, we do serve multiple neighbor jurisdictions. For including Pierce County, University Place, Fife. We provide water all the way up to South King County with to Federal Way and Ruston. Are the assets that our rate payers own provides virtually carbon free power in our service territory. And then we do get water from the Green River. We also have a short line rail service that provides. Service to commercial customers within the Port of Tacoma, so I won't discuss any rates there, but if you have any questions, please do let me know. Short line, excuse me, short line rail, which moves freight. A note on our commitment to equity, TPU is committed to providing the kind of outreach and. Communication with customers. We know that there are a lot of barriers that can be additional barriers for those of our customers who may be income constrained or have other challenges. And so we really strive to go out to our customers and provide meaningful outreach and engagement, not just expect them to come to us. So what that looks like is having a robust tabling and outreach program. We are out on community festivals throughout our service territory, staffed by volunteers and staff. Who are happy to donate time on the weekends to talk about the services we provide and the assistance to customers. We also strive to build a workforce that reflects the communities that we serve. And I'll admit we do have a way to go there, but we do have, I'm part of a team, a public affairs team that has a community outreach representative, but also an education outreach representative. And that person goes to different schools and talks about STEM programs, what we do at the utility, working at the utility. So we are working very hard to meet board expectations of reflecting our communities. And then again, I'll just reiterate that Tacoma Power, the main service we provide here in the city of Lakewood is one of the cleanest utilities in the world. Our portfolio is nearly carbon free because of our hydro projects in Lewis and Mason Counties. We manage power supplies so that we can meet customers' needs for decades to come. So that means. Smart fiscal management and smart management of our facilities. We own about $2 billion worth of assets to help us provide power and water. And then we take very seriously our mission to be the best stewards possible of our natural resources by providing. By working on mitigation projects and partnering with our local communities where we have our assets as well as with our tribes, local tribes. In order to maintain lands, fish and wildlife. And on that note, I will invite you all, if you haven't been out to any of our hydro projects or the Green River Filtration Facility or to any of our hatcheries. I would love to invite you to a tour. We also have parks and campgrounds. It's a really fun trip. It's a day long. Would love to invite you. I would be your host along with our subject matter experts. So we can meet at TP's campus and happy to take you out to learn more about the work that we do to mitigate the impacts of our projects. So transitioning to rate principles and adjustments, we are we are directed by the Public Utility Board to. Have gradual, consistent, stable and predictable rate changes. So what that means is we don't want to ever give our customers a shot. Rate spike or shock. We want to avoid dramatic changes. And we want to, we only again bill customers what it costs us to provide them with service. So gradualism is is our policy at TPU. A quick note on why we must adjust rates. So like, I'm sure all of you and all of our partner governments, we're facing. Incredible cost surges that's. Putting pressure on our ability to provide services to our customers. So increased costs from inflation, just like our rate payers and governments, TPU is facing. Drastic increases across the board and prices across the board that impact our ability to provide service. Supply chain shortages, that's also not a surprise. Supply chain shortages have caused delays and disruptions to our ability to provide service and that increases costs for us. And then maintaining our critical infrastructure, we have aging infrastructure. And we are, you know, required to maintain those assets for safety and reliability and that is, of course, as you know, expensive. We do engage in multiple actions in order to manage costs and make sure our rates are as affordable as possible. A few of those items are here. We do are we're constantly applying for state and federal grants to leverage our local dollars. We have refinanced bonds and loans to lock in lower interest rates. We have been recycling and selling equipments and prop equipment and properties that we no longer need. And then we are increasing sales of surplus power and water to other utilities. So nothing that would impact our customers, but we are selling surplus in order to benefit our customers and keep cost drivers low. We're also always implementing new and more efficient processes across the utility. Another note on managing costs and affordability, about 29% of our customers are eligible for our financial assistance programs. And these are programs that we have been working to build up since before the pandemic, but it's particularly after the pandemic. Here in Lakewood, let me see about the numbers, we have 306. Customers who are enrolled in our B cap program, billing credit assistance program, where if you are at 60% AMI or beneath, you get an automatic credit on your bill. We also have a program, a discount program, that's a 35% discount on your monthly bill for low income elderly or disabled people. And we have 302 residents enrolled in that program. We understand that assistance programs and applying, it can be, you know, bringing the documentation can be a barrier to folks. So we've added an additional program where if you are enrolled in one of our assistance program and you pay your monthly bill on time and in full, you will receive an additional credit. So there are lots of opportunities for our cost constrained customers to be able to. Manage their bill. Okay, here's the nitty gritty for our power rate adjustments. Across across our system of customers, residential customers will see a 6.5. Increase in 2025 and a 6.5% increase in 2026. So on a typical monthly bill, that will look like a $6.72 average increase. For residential customers in 2025 and a six point, excuse me, a $7.09 increase a month in 2026. Here, I'd like to show you a comparison of what a month, typical monthly bill looks like for a Lakewood Tacoma Power customer. The first column you'll see is say your average monthly bill is $105.93. If you're enrolled in our B cap, a bill credit assistance program, you will get a discount and your bill will be $80.63. If you are a low income elderly or disabled, your bill will be $68.85 a month. And if you are enrolled in B cap and you pay every month on time. And in full, your bill will be as low as $59.63. So that's just a snapshot of what the power of our assistance programs and how we're working to make sure that folks can keep the lights on. This is another visual of how our assistance programs will help or can offset cost rates. And rate adjustments. So the first three, the first graphic is our current rates. The second graphic is shows our 2025 rates and then our 2026 rates. So you'll see that for our income constrained customers who are enrolled in our assistance programs, the rate of monthly bill increase will only be about $4. As compared to the sticks and $4 for our typical TPU customers. And then here I'll just direct you to the top line, electricity. An automatic credit for B cap, it looks like $25.30 a month, but achievable, you can add an additional $21 to your bill credit if you're paying in time and in full. For a monthly total of $46.30 off your monthly power bill for an annual total of 550 $555.60. And then you can see on the second line, those numbers for our drinking water. TPU does not provide wastewater, stormwater or solid waste, but those are included because we send out one bill along with the city of Tacoma that provides those services. On this side, I'd like to show you a comparison of our partner utilities, our neighbor utilities in the region, power utilities. So you have Clark PUD, Peninsula Lico, Tacoma Power, Snow Pod, City of Seattle. And these are their 2024 monthly residential bills, bill rates. So you can see even with our proposed rates at $6.72 a month more in 2025. And $7.09 a month more in 2026, we are still among the lower rates. And these are 2024 numbers for our partner. Electric utilities. So we're still competitive and on the lower side. And again, we do everything we can to keep our rates as low as possible. We do also offer a lot of programs and services to help our customers manage their bills and their rates. So conservation is one of the best things that you can do. We know that energy efficiency can be daunting, especially if you own an older home. So we offer, we love speaking with our customers about how to become more energy efficient, how to conserve energy and water. We have staff who will come out to your home and do a rate audit and kind of discuss, walk you through what you could do. We have rebate programs as well to help offset those costs. We also provide zero interest and deferred loans for those home improvement projects that may be on the pricey side to help homeowners. Increase their energy efficiency. And then again, our payment assistance programs, as I mentioned earlier. We really encourage our Lakewood customers to visit mytpu.org to keep up on the latest rates as the process moves forward. Again, these will come before the Public Utility Board for final adoption in October and then be adopted by the city Tacoma City Council in November. We also have public meetings where you could submit written comment or send us an email. And there's also a newsletter where you can stay up to date on what's going on with rates. These not these numbers may change depending on what the utility board decides to do. So encourage all of our folks to visit us online or look for us out at your nearest community event. And I I think I kept it under 15 minutes. Please let me know if you have any questions. We're happy to answer them.
So remind me what rate of increase that. TPU sought and obtained in either 23 and 24?
I think off the top of my head, those were 3.4. I think for power. 3.5.
Each year?
Sir?
Each year, 23 and 24?
Uh, yeah, I'm not sure about I'm not sure about water, but.
So yes, Mayor, we do, we'll break up the increase with within the biennium, so it's not one in major rate increase. It's broken up into two different years.
Got it. The the reason why I ask is at least we we hear nationally that inflation is edging down. The Fed dropped rates a half point. But the proposed rate increase is 12% over two years, 13% over two years. So what was the internal justification to go way beyond the rate of inflation for the next two years?
Thanks. I didn't try and answer that.
Sure.
So I'm Nathan, I'm a rates analyst. We kind of worked on matching these things up. And part of the big, I mean, there's a couple of different things going on, right? We mentioned sort of critical infrastructure. We mentioned we so relicensing the dams is a big one. Our dams are up for a work license, so that's a couple hundred million dollars here and there to get them rerunning. The other kind of thing, the other driver here is Bonneville, which is the Power Association. That's providing kind of that provides power to all of the public utilities, but also Tacoma Power. Is raising its rates as well. So that's kind of one of these pass throughs through Bonneville, so. I'm trying to think. And then the other stat I thought I should mention too is the. Rosa already mentioned this, this bit about kind of we've seen real supply chain problems, but like transformers, for instance, have been up like about 300% since 2019. So that's like, there's a particular set of things in the in the utility industry that are kind of driving this, right?
Okay. Any other questions by members of council? Councilmember Brandstetter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, thank you for being here and giving us the chance to understand what is there in advance. But to the rates that you mentioned are. the rates that you mentioned are not yet approved. They're being proposed by TPU staff to to, to what sort of a approval? I seem to remember that there was like a two level approval process for rates that had to go through your board and then to the city council and so, so i- i- is that the so the public hearing is being held by which body?
Oh, thank you, Councilmember. Yes, that's correct. They will be, staff recommendations will be brought to the Public Utility Board. It's been an ongoing conversation, but I believe next week they will then approve final rates. The public hearing will be at the Tacoma uh Utility Board meeting this one, next Wednesday. Pardon me, is that until Wednesday, the ninth, October ninth? So there will be multiple opportunities at the Public Utility Board to provide public comment, but also at the Tacoma City Council meetings where these numbers will be confirmed. So multiple public hearing opportunities between now and November, when the final budget, city budget is adopted.
So the you two, your board approves the rate and then city council of Tacoma confirms them.
That's correct.
Okay, that and I, it's interesting to see that your, your, your power utility is virtually carbon free, which is generally true of much of many of the utilities in our area because of so much hydroelectric capability and you have internal hydroelectric capability as well as you can get access to hydroelectric capability of Bonneville. But um, in your long term projections or what are you doing about the, the Bonneville is under pressure to remove some of their hydroelectric facilities, particularly the ones on the Snake River in, in, in Western Washington. Is that a threat or a challenge to uh, you're maintaining a carbon free utility?
I would say yes, Councilmember. Why don't I give it to Nathan?
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, I'm sorry, I, well, I have the mic. I just wanted to confirm it's a three point five in twenty twenty three, three point nine in twenty twenty four uh for our rates. Uh, that's a mayoral instruction. Um, yeah, I think that is a challenge. I think that, uh, I mean, I, I uh, I'm not totally up to date on kind of where our lobbying is, but our, our, you know, we're one of Bonneville's biggest customers, so we're constantly in dialogue with them about this uh and kind of what our forecasted rates are. And friend me if I'm wrong, but we, we have not, what like our, we've mostly been able to meet our needs through conservation um in kind of the short term. Uh, I think, you know, there are o- other utilities that had to kind of go out and secure or build resources um in the long term. But yeah, I mean, I think Bonneville is kind of the core institution behind all these different public utilities.
So there are some comments that the removing some dams and that capability could be replaced by wind or nuclear that uh is Tacoma Power investing in either of those uh significantly with this rate increase?
Uh, so
Uh, Councilmember, thank you for the question. I don't have specifics that could get them for you. I know we do have some uh wind and solar assets and also a program for our customers who would install, who like to install solar panels on their homes, but I can get more information for you and send it to you.
Councilmember, my, my impression is for our IRP, our Integrated Resource Plan, is we review all of the lowest cost resources. And I think for the past few years that we, it's mostly been focused on conservation. I don't think we have looked into nuclear or when, or maybe a little resource area.
And you, and you had a slide that, and you, you talked about there being programs that are focused at sixty percent of AMI and below uh households to be able to, to do that. And you had a slide that indicated that like twenty nine or thirty percent of all your customers fit that demographic. Uh, but of that twenty nine and thirty percent, what percentage of them actually have applied and gone through the process that they're actually getting the reduction in rates?
Thank you, Councilmember, for the question. It's, it's a great question. Um, we, uh, I can actually, so our, sorry, I pulled these stats together a little bit ago. Um, our participation rate uh for this group for power is seventeen percent in twenty twenty four and nine percent in twenty, nine percent for water. Um, these are, so these seem low, right? But the uh the twenty twenty one participation rates were five percent and four percent respectively. Uh, so we've been, we've really been growing these programs. Um, but I think it would, it's a thing that TPU is like working very hard at getting more people signed up for. Um, our goal is to get ten thousand people. We have uh ten thousand customers. We have eight thousand signed up currently. So we couldn't, yeah, we'd love to get the word out more.
So there's eligible people that are not a- applying. Is that the issue or is the application process have other things that sorts them out?
That's a good question. Thank you, Councilmember. I mean, we know that for many of our income constrained customers, as we, there, you know, everything can feel like a barrier sometimes when you're struggling to, you know, meet day to day needs. And so we work really hard in our customer assistance program and department to make, to, to go out to our community. We can't possibly go door to door, but we do send mailers. We have information on our website. We're out at community events, getting the word out about our customer assistance programs. And all they need to do is just provide um proof of income and you are enrolled. So we have worked really hard to remove barriers for, for folks who are already facing difficulties to getting onto our assistance program.
So, you know, I, I guess that I would say that there are lots of programs that say, well, you're eligible, but you've got to provide proof of income. And the proof of income process is not easy. It's complicated and involves multiple pieces of paper and things to do that. So that is if you are looking to increase the percentage to, and then assuming Lakewood fits with that twenty seven percent non-city of Tacoma rate to do that, which I would say is not inconsistent with our estimate of the number of households in the city that are at sixty or at least below eighty percent of, of AMI. What do you, would you see that the city of Lakewood could do with respect to our users to um facilitate them getting enrolled and getting the benefit of of your program? And, and, and then the other question is, if everybody was eligible submitted for the program, would you have to increase the rates even more?
I'll take the first question first, Councilmember. Thank you. Uh, I would, I can give you an example on how um the city government can help us enroll more ma- more of your constituents in our assistance programs. Earlier this year, uh, the state gave uh one time two hundred dollar power bill credit uh and allotted uh a certain amount of funds to every utility that partnered with them on that. And city manager Caulfield was so wonderful, so easy to work with to help us get the word out to your constituents. So there are things that we can do to kind of plug into your um to how you communicate with your residents and and constituents. We're happy to come anytime you need a presentation, or if there is an event that you don't see TPU at, please do let me know. Um, we really encourage all of your residents to call our customer service office, uh, number and see if they qualify. We can help folks walk through that process, make it as easy as possible for them to enroll. Um, on your second question, I don't have the answer to that. I know that we do, um, the rate increase does um in part impact our, how much we are able to assist our customer, our uh income constrained customers, but I can get more detailed information for you, unless you have something to add, Nathan.
I, just my impression, right, is that I, I believe we're budgeted to cover it, but I don't, like, there's a lot of, there's a lot of excess money that we've been kind of working, we've been kind of dealing with, but I can give you the exact numbers if you want.
Well, you know, you know, you know, I guess that we internally through some of our community based partners that help low income families can do some encouraging to get more people to look to, to do that because it's and it is, it's a benefit. And in this realm of inflation, even if, you know, uh thirty or forty dollars a month is uh maybe six dozen eggs, but
Thank you so much for that, Councilmember. We so appreciate it. And I'd be happy to send any information or flyers if you have individual newsletters that go out. I do that with our local Tacoma City Council members. I'm happy to blast you with every kind of information we have possible to share with your constituents. So please just let me know and I will proactively do that as well. Thank you so much.
Okay, and then I, I, I just had a couple of more questions that your, your your presentation triggered that not necessarily your rate related, but uh you talked about that one of the things that you do is you sell surplus property. Does the utility have any surplus property in Lakewood? That, 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 that the city might be interested in?
I'll have to get back to you on that, Councilmember.
I, 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 you guys say I'll do that.
Perfectly around the lake.
Yeah, yeah. And uh that uh, the city of Tacoma processed some restrictions on evictions of renters, saying you can't be evicted during the winter, okay? And you couldn't be uh uh evicted during the school year, in some cases if you had the right sort of things over there. But did that, those provisions also impact you with respect to ending someone's service in those same windows?
Thank you, Councilmember. We, during the pandemic, we followed state regulations to the, which what the state imposed a moratorium on utility cutoffs. And then after the pandemic ended, so to speak, um, there was a grace period where we still had more time to give customers opportunity to get back on track. Um, I believe that moratorium is no longer in effect. And so we ha- uh have spent the last four years working uh with our customers um who got in arrears or had a lot of trouble coming back from the pandemic. Um, but I, I don't believe we have a moratorium right now.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions by members of the council? Councilmember Laura Stoll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you for coming in. Hopefully you can hear me through my mask. Um, just on the opposite side of the um supply uh is demand. Do you see with the increasing housing density stuff that's going on with the state and increased use of electric vehicles, that demand for power from Tacoma Power is going to go up? And how does that impact rates?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, so I can answer in a few ways. Um, so we currently for our residential class, we see kind of, at least in the short term, a bit of a decline. Um, but we've been seeing, and I think the other kind of elephant in the room here is also West Rock. Uh, the kind of big uh paper manufacturer in downtown Tacoma, it was a huge customer of ours. Um, so we mostly kind of see demand in sort of the short term sort of stabilizing. We have like an electrification forecast, which was a different type of policy scenarios, um, and puts in uh what we think will happen. Um, and um, we kind of see that really starting to kick off twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty nine, demand starting to shoot up. Um, if you, the kind of following the news about utilities, one of the big things is data centers. Uh, we don't really have data centers yet here, um, but that's kind of one of the big short term drivers. Um, in terms of kind of the housing density and things, um, we kind of have run a few numbers on this because we're are, we're somewhat involved in the, you know, the utility somewhat involved in the home in Tacoma process, uh, which the city government is in. Um, and it's, I mean, it's, um, we see somewhat more somewhat more costs and somewhat more kind of service for like very high density, uh, if we really, if you really kind of concentrate it. Uh, the more sort of like slow growth, kind of like what the state's been doing on the like, uh, what Mayor Whelan is saying about kind of the lots. Um, that ends up kind of uh driving up demand a bit, but uh in terms of costs, it kind of stays down a little bit more because you don't have to do uh as much infrastructure for kind of these smaller areas.
Okay, and you don't anticipate any capacity issues from that increased demand?
Sorry.
You don't anticipate any capacity issues for TPU from that increased demand?
I mean, I, and I think it's as gradually as it comes along, I think. I mean, I think every year we kind of, we go out and look for to make sure we have resources to meet every demand. So, you know, these things take time. Like, we, we try and match it as I do, so.
And Nathan, is it accurate to say that at the moment, we're seeing a less energy usage because everything is much more energy efficient now than it was? And everything keeps becoming much more energy efficient. So for the time being, it seems like there's a small dip, but of course with density that we would expect that to change.
Very good. Any other questions? We appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Thanks for being one of the utility providers for our residents.
Thank you so much.
The only thing I would correct, as you mentioned, it was very easy to work with Mr. Caulfield. I'm not sure that that's as accurate as our experience. Okay, next we have our joint Lakewood Arts Commission meeting. And so if the members of the art commission, Arts Commission would come on up as best you can and gather around a few of the microphones. We have a great group tonight, so come on down. Come on up, Lua. Susan and Daryl, Sully. Yeah, it's good to see everybody. Earl, you want to jump up? Are you good? Everyone's good. Welcome. Good to see you all.
Thank you. Thank you for having us tonight. Uh, my name is Emily Feline and I am the Chair of the Lakewood Arts Commission. Uh, are we doing introductions or in the interest of time?
That'd be great.
Okay, awesome. So I will turn it over. Um, all the members will introduce themselves.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good to see you.
All right. Well, first of all, we just wanted to thank the council um for their support um of the Arts Commission um and for uh supporting the work, but also providing um the financial means to um do the work that we do. So I just wanted to start off, um, we first just wanted to speak to the longevity of our members. Uh, we truly are a very cohesive unit um which we've all been very grateful for um as we, as we voluntarily, um, you know, commit our time to this committee. Um, we have a lot of consistency in our membership. Um, we have a lot of members who have been with us for, you know, two, over two or three years. Um, and we have two new members this year, Shauna and um Laura, who couldn't be with us tonight. Um, so we just wanted to also give special recognition in our group to those who um have been with us for over five years. Uh, so we have Daryl and Adriana, um Earl and Lonnie. So they have been with us for over five years. Uh, we also have one potential new member applying um to be with us. Um, so hopefully, uh, hopefully he will join us soon. Um, and so then I am now going to hand it over to Earl to talk about our signal boxes. Oh, I'm sorry, we're not doing that tonight. I won't be talking about signal boxes instead. Uh, we had a slight change in agenda. Um, so currently we have two signal box, or ten signal boxes that are in progress. Um, the artists have been selected. Um, we've determined the ten locations where we'll be doing those signal box wraps. Um, templates have been created for the artists to submit their work. Um, locations that we've chosen are primarily along Pacific Highway and South Tacoma Way. Um, and we're focused on military and the international district. So a lot of the artists that were submitted, um, submitted pieces that focused on those two aspects. Um, so really the signal box wraps are a great way. It's a very low cost, high impact um piece of art that we can put out to the community that, you know, beautifies our roads. Um, and it's just really uh very eye catching um for those drivers. And um it looks like those will be installed in the next few weeks. You'll be seeing those soon, group. All right, um, moving on to our rotating artists and our quarterly art receptions that we hold. Um, our first quarter this year was with Ron Snowden. Um, he's one of our very well-known sort of celebrity artists in the area. Um, he has a pages and pages of awards in his resume. Um, he got a really, really nice big crowd. Um, thank you all to the council members for supporting supporting all the shows and, and for coming out to those. Um, and in our uh second quarter, uh, we had the Pierce College Faculty Art Show. Um, so we had some uh four or five members of our Pierce College faculty um come and present their pieces, um, which was exciting. Um, and then our third quarter, um, we just had the art And then our third quarter, we just had the art opening for that. That was Sylvia Australia on our Arts Commission and Lori Davenport. And so I am just going to turn it over briefly to Sylvie to talk a little bit about the show.
Okay, so thank you all for inviting us to come and speak and share about the Arts Commission tonight. I'm the not so celebrity artist here. So the art show is still out there and it's called Souls and Stories. When I was asked to do the do an art show, my concept was to highlight humanity by featuring people on the South Sound that make up our communities. I'm a photographer and media person. So and I also I love hearing people's stories. My favorite show is CBS Sunday Morning where they feature stories and there's everybody. I mean, there's so many people have very rich stories and I like capturing the essence of photographs and writing the stories. So I knew it would be more rich to add and add more texture to the show by teaming up with a painter and artist of people. And I met Lori Davenport through the Tacoma Art Walk, which I think that we should do one in Lakewood. Her heart, her art resonates with me with the vibrant colors and the liveliness of subjects, the realness of people that she sees in the neighborhood, her love of diversity. I knew that she would be the perfect one to team up with. The people that I photographed and I didn't really completely realize it until the reception night. These people were amazing. They're that we had trailblazers, civil rights activists, city leaders, including our own Deputy Mayor Moss, pioneers in their fields, longtime residents, teachers, overcomers. Just there's so much good in the world and in our communities in the South Sound. The reception was one of the largest in attendance, about 150. Many people featured in the show attended along with their family and friends, including Charles Lassiter. If you're not familiar with him, he's the first black pharmacist to own his own establishment in Tacoma. He was there. He got out of his sick bed. He literally had a hard time walking. He was having back issues. But his fraternity brothers, who are also veterans, brought him to the show that night so that he could be honored and he and he was and it was pretty amazing. His fraternity brothers include I believe he's Dr. Willie Stewart, the Assistant Superintendent was there. And Lyle Qusim was there. He's a civil rights activist and community leader. Our own Loua Pritchard was there and she's featured in the show, is Executive Director of the Asia Pacific Cultural Center. And our own Lakewood Parks Hero Scott McKay. All these people featured in the exhibit are the core of what makes our communities vibrant and welcoming, safe and enriching. And I really wish that I had had more foresight to ask the mayor to welcome these people because they're the ones that have gone before to create the communities that we have now and are they're continuing to enrich their communities. They're they're not stopping. They're still working. Loua is just like energizer bunny. She just keeps on going. She's amazing. So I want to thank you all for allowing me to speak on that and giving me the opportunity to do that. It was really amazing. If you haven't seen it, please go out and read stories because they have, everybody has incredible stories, so.
That's a beautiful exhibit.
Thank you, Sylvie. Yes, absolutely beautiful. I also just wanted to highlight our fourth quarter art show that's opening October 21st. That's going to be Pierce College students. So a handful of students from the college will be hanging up their art and some of them, it's their first time showing, so it'll be exciting opportunity for them. All right, and I will now turn it back over to Sylvie to talk a little bit about our Martin Luther King celebration and the Martin Luther King videos.
You guys are getting the full meal deal tonight. There's a lot of talking for me. Okay, so this year's 2024 series for MLK was from the quote of Martin Luther King Jr. If you can't fly, then run. If you can't run, then walk. If you can't walk, then crawl. But whatever you do, you have to keep moving forward. The focus was on youth giving their vision and understanding of what the quote means to them. And the first video was a child's perspective. And if for that video, the focus was remembering and respecting those that have come before. And his ending message at the very end, which I thought was right on target was it was kind of, he looked directly into the camera and he said, but whatever you do, you have to keep moving forward. And I think that was a message to adults to come on, people, get it together. This is the world that you're leaving us. So that was, I thought that was apropos. The second video was Lake's football team leaders, including legendary PNW High School Coach Dave Miller. And they spoke on the sacrifice, the unity and the commitment, acknowledging MLK for creating the path for inclusion for all of us. They they it was pretty amazing to hear them talk about how if he hadn't gone before, they wouldn't have had a place. And it's because of the work that Martin Luther King did. That's why things are changing, even though we have a long way to go and we have more changes to make. It's happening. The third video was the youth, sorry, the youth and the call to action with the message, it's time to make changes, time to act and move forward. So overall, the the videos had a combined viewership of 38,000, which is pretty cool. So this year there's it's different. It's now it's going to be in person. And for the 2025 theme, it's going to be beloved community, really looking forward to the in person event. And it will be Saturday, January 11th at the park, Fort Silicon Park. It'll start with the MLK Welcome Walk for our beloved community. And it'll be followed by three workshops for leaders to learn how to implement the traits of a beloved community in their own communities. I think that Lakewood is really moving forward to just expand beyond just thinking about our own community, but we're thinking about stretching it out to the world. And that's pretty awesome for, you know, a new relatively new city like us. Okay, I think that's it for me for now. I'll be back.
Very good. Thank you, Sylvie.
You're a tough act to follow, Sylvie. Thank you. Council persons, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor. We had a street festival on Motor Avenue on the first weekend in June, and this is a wonderful opportunity to showcase the plaza and its new, it's it's new formation. This one was this one was called Jazz Night and Car Show. We had live music. We had food trucks as always. We had an amazing car show and a very, very good turnout. I want to take a moment to to say how happy I am that the Historical Museum is in its new location and it really benefited this year. I think they were quoted as having about 99 people come and visit, which is very good for them. So a lot of great memories for everyone. And it was an awesome way to kick off the summer. And I look forward to this festival in years to come.
Great.
Thank you.
Do you want me to just jump in? Thank you for having having us. My job is continuing education within the Lakewood Arts Commission. And I was asked to speak about one artist, Perico the Artist. We we nurture artists. We grow them. Perico the Artist is a was a street artist working in Tacoma and Seattle. We gave him his first exhibition here in Lakewood at the Lakewood Gardens Wagner House. It was called To Whom It May Concern. His work is bold, structured in Mexican traditions, exploring self identity, mental health, migration, and empathy for humanity. And an artist's work that exhibits in a single show can be very different from a public art body of work. And we've seen Perico grow. We've seen him become really sensitive to community needs. Not tempering his work, there is still those bold, strong images, but they're more about family tradition and holding community together than his more provocative single work. And to see him come in and talk to us in this very mature way, understanding the differences between individual work and work for the community was made us feel proud. And so that is a way that we are growing our artists for our public art work here in Lakewood.
Thank you.
Can I just hold this?
You may.
So I'm going to briefly touch on our summer concerts. We had nine summer concerts this year and they overlap with the farmer's market, which is fantastic. So Tuesday nights, for sure with the farmer's market, we've seen better sales for our vendors and everybody because there's a spike that happens when people come after work. They come to the market to do a little bit of shopping and then they go watch the summer concerts, which is fantastic. And from the Arts Commission, you know, music is one of many venues of art that we want to bring to the community. And it's important to say that we bring in some really big name fans. And we're able to do this. We're doing this for free for our community. These are not, some of these groups charge a lot for tickets. And it's a great opportunity to provide music and engagement, you know, for our community and anybody who wants to come and dance. So and it's fun for any of you who've come to the concerts at the pavilion. It's a very approachable facility and the, you know, the musicians are there and the public can interact with the musicians and dance and it's a good time. And we 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 estimate there's probably between three and 500 people on average for our concerts. We can't do really a head count because we're not selling tickets. We're just letting people come.
Well done. Serious for sure. And the lodging tax for next year has been reviewed by the committee and they made the recommendation to fully fund to the council. That will be coming soon.
Okay, I'm back. Now I'm going to talk about Fiesta de la Familia. That was our big festival for the community involving Latino culture and it was pretty awesome. There were about approximately 8,000 people that attended. And we had everything from Latin dancing horses to music to art. And I'm going to just talk a little bit about a few things. The Latin dancing horses, Skagit Latin Horses Association came. And if you got a, if you had the chance to see these horses, they're pretty awesome. I grew up watching these dancing horses in a Mexican rodeo that would come every year to my state, which is not here. Arizona. And it was, it was so cool to see. I mean, they were the most popular entertainment at the Fiesta. There were so many people there watching because they're so beautiful. All these different horses, there were gypsy horses, there were pintos and the costumes of the vaqueros were just on point. They the horses danced to the mariachis that were playing that were also on point. So overall, it was just really a great show and the the horses association, they were very professional. They were accommodating to the people, interactive. And they were just a great representative of the rich Latino culture that we have in Lakewood. And if that hasn't changed, it's 19% of our population. Unless it's more now. It is more because I have a new grandchild. So also at the Fiesta, we had an ofrenda, which is an altar that honors the people that have gone before us that have, it's paying tribute to loved ones who are no longer with us. And we had an artist that created the ofrenda and you could put tea lights with marigolds and a message to your loved one. And that was pretty popular. A lot of people participated in that. And then the other thing that I am talking about is the Community Roots Tree. This year it was actually canvas about 10 foot high and it was a tree that I painted and Daryl painted this guy. And people were, we had the youth running the booth and so they were instructed to give the people leaves that they could write their last name on and what they bring to the community, whether a lot of people wrote down different things that they bring to the community like volunteer, joy, welcoming, friendship, serving, et cetera, art. And as as a, as a arts commission, we are covering or we're striving to cover every aspect of art that exists. Paintings, visuals, word art, music. So we're trying to cover it all. And I think we're really growing into a very rich art community, which is really awesome. And it's only going to benefit the community, honestly, because it'll bring people in to come in. You know, see what's going on here in Lakewood. Speaking of which, at the show for the dancing horses, I sat next to an elderly woman who came from Olala. That's the first time hearing that. What?
Port Orchard.
Port Orchard? I like Olala better. It sounds cool.
Ooh la la.
Yeah. It was new to me. Like, what? I think that sounds like, you know, an Indian name. But anyway, I'm gonna say it again, Olala. She she saw an ad on Facebook for our festival and she asked her son to bring her from Olala. And he brought her and you know what she said? She was so excited to be at this festival and she was with in a walker. She said that this festival was better than Seattle's. Okay, that's pretty awesome. I won't say which festival it is, but we all know which festival Seattle puts on. And our festival was better. So next year, here we go. Okay, now I'm really done for the night. Thank you all.
And because we do great work, so we're still doing it.
Yes.
We're working on a mural. And this mural will be called Beloved Community. And it'll be located at the barn at Fort Silicon Park. And there are three artists working on it. Rodney King, Perico the Artist that Susan just talked about, and Dion Bonner. So each of these artists will present two concepts at our October meeting. And the mural will be complete by the end of the year. So the ribbon cutting for the mural will take place at the Martin Luther King Event, January 11th, called the MLK Welcome Walk for our beloved community. So the beloved community idea is to really, we're hoping to see these artists to come up with how our Lakewood community really looks and what is it made of? So we're really looking forward to making this mural beautiful for the city of Lakewood. So thank you.
It's gonna be fantastic. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and on that note, our annual Arts Commission Retreat is on November 8th. We are inviting a guest speaker just to discuss what is the future of public art and how to approach sensitive issues. I think that we all know that public art and the benefits of such are grounded in historical fact. Public art creates stories and conversations in a city. It creates, it helps create a sense of place and stability. It's good for the mental health of the inhabitants. It creates beauty and interest in difficult environments, makes us smile, and it drives investments in the economics of the city. Having said that, we are facing some very interesting societal challenges. Our populations are growing more diverse. There are major intersections of culture and belief systems that can meet or clash. Our challenge is to include new narratives and include historic narratives that may have been excluded. We have to be aware of whose voices are being channeled in our public art. How do we confront or assimilate new technologies, new trends? What will be our philosophical platform as a commission on this issue? Climate change is a challenging practically and Climate change is a challenging practically and philosophically. How do we protect our art from the extreme weather conditions? How do we embrace activism on this issue or others? How do we include voices of youth who have a great concern and investment in climate change? Our commission needs to think about and create flexible and inclusive guidelines and policies that prepare us for the changes to come that are on the way. Having said that, I think it's a wonderful opportunity to embrace and rise to the occasion as we confront these changes and, and look at the challenges as opportunities.
And more fun on that day, APCC will be teaching cooking.
Even better. Great.
Okay, thank you. So I wanted to cover the holiday parade that we have every year, going back to December of last year. One of our biggest events in the city of Lakewood. It's not only an opportunity for the community to come in the thousand number of visitors, but a large amount of participants from school age children, all the way up to elderly groups from our neighborhoods. We have a lot of freedom as the participates and I participate in building floats. Camaraderie with friends and family to bring our creative creativity to the city and share it with our neighbors. So, thank you.
And last year rained like crazy. But we didn't give up. We still went through the parade. So, and there were so many people. Not only us in the parade, but people watching us in the rain. So it was great. And so the, this year's will be December seventh.
Okay.
If you'll put that on your calendar so you can come watch us.
We were there and will be.
Hi again. Sylvie, very, very well covered, most of the hitting points. I wanted to just take a moment, Council and Mr. Mayor, to express my deepest gratitude for these facilities that we have. You know, obviously, the Plaza is a wonderful place to have events. But this particular festival that we were just talking about, the Fiesta de la Familia, actually outgrew that facility. And I'm grateful that your leadership has given us this wonderful area that's the Pavilion and beyond at Fort Stillcom. I saw some wonderful things. And I think I, I would be remiss if I didn't bring up, we, we got a wonderful, wonderful hit on that morning. King TV's morning show had a wonderful shout out to us. And let me see if I can get this right. The Maxim Culture Through the Consulate of Mexico, which you guys did a wonderful proclamation that day, actually promoted our event. And I think that, that is a very, very wonderful opportunity for us to, to expand. And once again, thank you.
Absolutely.
That's all.
Thank you. Is that it, group? I want to open it up to the questions or comments from council. And I just want to start out by extending my heartfelt appreciation. You know, Patty and I were on the Arts Commission for a number of years. It was really a great opportunity to start some seed planting. But you guys have taken the harvest to the max. You've really done a fabulous job over the years. And it's expanded all the offerings that we talked about for so many meetings about how art transcends, you know, all sorts of stuff and really can make a, a community livable and rich in its diversity. And you guys have really done a fabulous job on that. Sure, Councilmember Bill.
There we go, somebody. Thank you, you guys. It was a great presentation. I'm always so proud to be the council liaison for the Arts Commission. I know right now you're going through the mural process and I love that because I was there for the very beginning of it. I like to see what you guys come up with because it's just so amazing, the dialogue that you go through. But everything that you've done, so I started on the Arts Commission before I was here. And so I was with Daryl and Lonnie about the concerts and we started doing stuff like that. You know, getting things going and then just dropping like, hey, it would be great to have a mural one day, you know, just things like that. To see things come to fruition. You guys work so hard and so creative and so innovative. I'm just very proud of everything that you do and how every event, every just communication, all of it, it's amazing. So thank you. And I will be there on November eighth. I think I RSVP'd already. I'm off. So that's good. I'm excited. I'm excited for the cooking.
Mr. Brandstetter.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, thank you all for not just being here tonight, but, but being here consistently for the community. I can say when the, the mayor and the deputy mayor and I came on the council fifteen years ago, that the arts program was lethargic, if I, if I, if I could say that. And one of the reasons it was lethargic is it wasn't being supported by the city and the city council with any funding, you know. We were, we were supposed to go out there and make art without straw, you know, being able to go in and go and do that. But, you know, we managed to change that around, but we set the tables for it to be changed around. But it's the Arts Commission that has really changed things around with, with going on. And when, you know, we have at various places around the city, we have a, our, our vision for when the city had thirty years, which is twenty twenty-six. And there's an element of that, that, that has to do with a vibrant arts culture and, and that, that's going on. And, and a vibrant arts culture is something that I think on, when we go down that mission statement, that's one of the things that we can say, you know, vision accomplished. Okay. But vibrant is also something that is, means that it's going to be ongoing to do that. And it certainly sounds like you have that, that in your intent. Okay? And so the community is going to be well off for doing that. Twenty twenty-six is also a significant year. It's the thirtieth anniversary of, of, of the city. You know, at our twenty-fifth anniversary, we had some elements of art that were a part of our celebration. And we certainly would, we, we don't have to reprise exactly what we did in twenty twenty-five, but we do want to make art an element of going to do that. And I think that I, I would just sort of, would really like to say about the, the, the reception that was here recently and the show that has been on display here in the city hall, okay? With, with, with all of the people that were recognized by art being able to go and do that. And one of the things was, they were, they were, there were different makers and examples. And that by, by highlighting them and art being a way to highlight them, you know, I, I think was very important. Not only appreciated by the individuals because, you know, it was the kind of thing that happens to a lot of individuals after they die. But there wasn't a memorial. This was, this was a recognizing people that were there. Some folks said that it were going to do that. And so, you know, continuing to use art to identify the examples of people who have made a difference to, to others, in particular to young people to emulate. I, I think it serves us well that, 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 that you did that. And you've done that through some of the Martin Luther King elements and, and in terms of, in terms of doing that. So I think that, you know, your, your impact on the community has been significant. And it's something that will, that will outlast all of our tenures on the council and probably all of your tenures on the Arts Commission. Because it's, it's creating lasting differences to be able to go and do that, you know. And it's, you know, it, it, it's, it's a, it's a pleasure as a council member to support you in your.
Mr. Boki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just want to recognize, and I think this council recognizes, and so I'm just chiming in here. These events don't just happen, right? I mean, and it takes really special qualities to pull off an event like a parade or Fiesta de Familia or any of these other kind of events. Like I'm not an event promoter guy, you know. I think I would have a real difficulty if you said, hey, I've got a concept. Make it happen. I'd be like, I'll, I'll come, you know, I'll, I don't know, I'll bookkeeper or something, you know. So, you know, angels don't just fall from the sky and make these things happen. And so it's the folks in this room, it's the folks on your committee who also then bring in more people. And, and then city staff helps, integral part of that to really make it happen. So we recognize that this is difficult work really, right? It's fun. We show up the day of the event. I don't like Fiesta de Familia. This is great. Oh, this is wonderful. And you know, we get to be council people. But it takes months and months of, of planning to make these things happen. And, and finding the community partners and finding other people to make this happen. So we, we really, really appreciate that. And thank you, thank you for your efforts. And it, it really is like Councilmember Brandstetter saying, it's, it's a robust lineup of, of things now. And, and then you kind of just keep, you know, I, I'm impressed. You, you set your sights on the mural and that's now happening. And you've got a, a plan and you've got a date apparently that's going to be done. And, and I think that that's just, just great. So thank you very, very much for, for doing what you're doing. Because it is having an impact. I think it's having a real impact on things. Councilmember Brandstetter has a, has a very long-term perspective on it. But I, I think we, we should be very impressed with how things are moving forward. Thank you.
Well, now, unless there's any other comments, I just want to end the conversation with some additional comments and a call to action. Because we're all sitting here as friendly audience of folks who really, in my humble opinion, get it. That really understand the value of art and culture to a thriving community. It's inextricably linked. You have to really have that and appreciate it. And you know, as, as Mr. Brandstetter indicated, it, it's been a road that we have all journeyed down from limited budget to something that actually works. You know, we dedicated monies from the lodging tower, from the McGavick Center days to go toward the Public Art Fund. And, and that helped produce two large, major pieces of public art, along with some of the other beautiful things that you've, you've created. And I just want to, you know, not only echo the congratulations and thanks for all your hard work, but I do want to echo some congratulations to this council and the councils before that had the wherewithal to fund public art. And let me tell you a little bit about what we're doing recently through lodging tax. You know, the city of Lakewood is pretty fortunate. I just sat in a full day meeting for the Lodging Tax Committee on Friday. And we have grown our lodging tax in the city through healthy economic development from about three hundred and fifty thousand a year when I first got on the council. Maybe it was four hundred thousand. It's now a million three.
Oh.
Annually. And we have reviewed the requests for investments in this community over the course of time. And council will receive the recommendations from the Lodging Tax Committee in, in a couple of weeks. But those investments include significant investment in the Lakewood Playhouse. Significant investments in Lakewood Gardens. Significant investments in the city of Lakewood's various programs, Summer Fest, Fiesta de la Familia. All the other events that you guys do so much good work in executing, but it starts with resources. And I'm really, really proud of these people who've had the guts to do it. Because nothing happens without a little seed capital and good hard work. And, you know, I have to hand it to this council because they have seen that vision. We've made it a priority. And, you know, now you guys are helping execute and creating the fruits of all this collective labor. So, you know, speaking of the Lakewood Playhouse, we were able to create a little extra money for marketing by way of the new mural on the front of Lakewood Playhouse. If you haven't seen it, it's fantastic. It's by the same gentleman Gregory that did the, the bathroom facility out of Fort Stillcom Park with some assistance with the other member there. And it's just fantastic. And so they have their, their Godspell production about building a beautiful city. And it's really supposed to be very symbiotic about what we're trying to do here in Lakewood. So I would encourage you to, you know, support them. It's a huge organization by way of cultural efforts to increase the, the arts and, and culture scene in Lakewood. So my call to action is when you see people on social media say, why are they wasting money doing X, Y, or Z? Please, please say your why and explain why it's important, not just to you, but to the community and, and why you think it has value. Because it's important that we collectively have a good chorus of voices that support all the good work that we're doing collectively. And so my final thing would be, if I had something to add to the work plan in my day job in Auburn, I go walking around the streets and they've got these beautiful concrete plinths that they put up in different locations. And they have rotating, the artists bring a piece of sculpture, whatever, and donate it for a period of time. And then there's a vote about which one may be selected. And then they have a permanent piece of art for the city. And they're beautiful all around little street corners and stuff. And it's just another thing that we can add to it. And I would bet that businesses would sponsor a plant, whatever the cost would be, fifteen hundred bucks, two thousand bucks, whatever it is. And we could just further enhance the, the visual and sort of concrete art, so to speak, that sculpture provides in addition to everything else you do. So that would be my
Fantastic.
Ask for the work plan.
While the commission is wonderful and great, as you can hear and see things around the city. But we want to thank you for giving us a great person to work with from the city is Sally Martinez.
Absolutely.
We, 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 we could not have done any of this without her behind us all. And we also want to thank you, the council, for always supporting and providing the financials that we need to do our work. So, thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Have a great evening. Yeah, appreciate it.
I, I did just want to take a moment. We do have a question on behalf of the Arts Commission or the council. And you teed up my question very nicely. So thank you. Our question, at the last Arts Commission presentation we did for the council, there was talk of purchasing a piece of art to hang here at City Hall. And so we were just wondering if you are interested in purchasing a piece of art from one of our rotating artists that have come through?
Absolutely.
And if you're interested, you know, if there, do you know when that would be budgeted for and how much or where you'd like to hang it?
Yeah, so let, let me take a step back and say yes and yes. I think we had talked as a council some time ago, correct me if I'm wrong, that it would be our desire, and we need to work with the manager, of course, on the budgeting piece, but it would be our desire that the city would acquire a piece from every show for its permanent art collection. And they could be displayed out here or wherever else and rotate the art. But I think that would be my suggestion. I haven't, you know, I don't have, we'll have some consensus building on that perhaps later tonight. But that would be, I think, a goal, to acquire a piece that's selected by the commission. Or maybe you do a public process where people vote for whatever piece should be part of the permanent city collection. And we should ultimately budget for that in a biennial sort of way so that you, so you know how much you have to work with. But I think we can at least do something. We'll, we'll, we'll work on it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, building the collection would be great. And you just think how beautiful it could be out here to add some color, get rid of these glass enclosures that enclose nothing. And, you know, put something of, of interest and color up there and really make it a vibrant city hall. It'd be great. Yeah, it's quite reasonable. Yeah, quite reasonable. Fifteen hundred to two thousand. So we'll see what we can do about working to get this initial one. So let's kick it off and do it as a bang. That'll be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much. So our next matter is a review of the Street End Report Recommendations from the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. And I'm going to give us about a five-minute recess so we can let that group get up and get set and give us And I'm going to give us about a five-minute recess so we can let that group get up and get set and give us a chance. Just waiting for Mr. Boki. So I think we can at least start with an introduction. So welcome. And for the, uh, Street End Report Recommendation Overview from our Parks and Rec Advisory Board, we have our Parks and Rec and Community Services Director, Ms. Dawsworth, and the board members in attendance. Welcome.
Great, great. Um, thank you, Mayor Whelan and city council members. We're super excited to, uh, bring you the recommendation from the Parks Board regarding a street end pilot project. So I'd like to introduce Jason Gerwin, who is our Chair of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, to get us started. And, um, way with the
Very good. Welcome, Jason.
Uh, thank you, council. Appreciate you having us here tonight. Um, kind of in July was, uh, the meeting that we had designated in regards to, to discuss in the street end topic, although for many of the members of the Parks Board, it's not the first time that we've, uh, studied or, or looked at street ends.
Absolutely.
And so with that being said, um, coming out of the Edgewater Park, uh, discussion and this discussion, uh, it's definitely generated a lot of community interest and, uh, uh, varying opinions. And so, you know, it was real important to the, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board that we looked at this comprehensively and we, we had a fair process that everyone could look and see how decisions and recommendations were being made. Um, with that being said, the Parks Board chose to add many criteria to, uh, the evaluation, um, being safety, security, equity, uh, linear feet of shoreline, water quality, access to fishing, which happens to be one of the, um, great interests, uh, to, to lake access. And then, um, you know, was going to be a significant, uh, change in use. Um, so what we think, uh, we've got here is a balanced matrix. Uh, you know, some people could weigh one way or the other, but we were looking at it from that lens and trying to be completely transparent in that process.
How, how was your public process? Did you get a lot of engagement?
Uh, myself personally, I had a few members of the public reach out. Um, and then, um, again, I'm not a social media user, but, uh, my wife is. And so I use her accounts and the amount of engagement that way, uh, was substantial. Again, very much like Edgewater. Um, again, a little disappointing in that, that social media, that a lot of, um, the messaging isn't grounded in fact. And, uh, I'm fortunate to be a part of this board and, and know what's grounded in fact. And so with that being said, uh, we want to go through kind of that matrix and the ranking of the sites. And so I want to introduce Stacy Redding and she'll give you that overview.
I just wanted to remind council, as Stacy's getting prepared, she's going to go through the report, that we did do an update in 2022. Council reviewed it in February 2023 and that's what generated the idea of doing a pilot project. So, uh, this was an update to the report. And so this is the current, um, document that we should be looking at when we're talking about street ends and maybe future, uh, development of them, so.
Yep. And, and the only reason I asked and just to dovetail my comment about public process, as we all know, there was a lot of public interest recently in the street end issues. And there were questions about the criteria that were used and the, you know, earlier 2009 report and then wanted to make sure that, that there was enough comment vetted to make sure that the criteria used this time was as robust as it could be.
Uh, being, um, I've been here for quite
A while?
Years. I was a part of probably the first two street end conversations that I have to say sometimes were quite painful. And so, um, in the early days, really when the, the 2009 study that, uh, was done, we really only looked at topography, length and width. We really didn't put much thought into use, access, safety, crime prevention, uh, neighboring impacts. There just wasn't, there wasn't that kind of detail or thought. So, um, but it was a good, um, introduction to the topic just to say, hey, we have these because we're an early city. We kind of were just finding these little places along the way. Not sure if it was a parcel, if it was a street end, if it was right, or if it was right of way or, or an easement. So it was really just a conversation to say, hey, these are here. Um, how might we, how might we use them, access them? And then what's the future? Knowing the city had a lot of other, um, goals and strategies and priorities, exactly. So this particular study, when we got back, was really an update to, to move, go from the original study, 2009, and look much more detailed into it, much more consistently. We actually had, you know, twenty years of history, uh, in just maintaining public spaces and doing so many different park developments over the years, how we know the impact. First of all, we know that it's always scary when you make change, right? That, that, that that comes through. But also how we work with the community to gather information, talk about issues and concerns, assess the site, assess the impact, and really look much broader into those spaces. And so I think this report was much more detailed and we, um, when you first looked at it and, uh, as a council in twen- uh, 2023, there was a, a matrix that had been put together. But after all of the conversations just from then until, uh, last month, and, um, uh, even before some of the other conversations came about, we just heard so much more from the community about, um, uh, all the different issues and ideas. So that was trying to be, the park board added an awful lot based on council feedback as well as public feedback from the various processes to get to what we thought was a consistent way of looking at everything. Um, lots of different ideas and, and criteria and giving it a score just so that we could have a start from prioritization and then talk about, you know, the top level, um, in a little bit more detail. So we'll go over that with you right now.
I appreciate that because it's just kind of helpful to lay out so people kind of know from whence we came to where we are.
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly. It's been an evolution.
All right. Thank you, Mary. And some of this is going to just be a recap of that really, uh, presentation that was made in February of 2023 with an update of the updated priority matrix. Because I realize some council members were not present for that. And it's also just going to be a refresher for, uh, what that study entailed for each development site. So as a refresher, uh, what is the street end? The street end is a, a street terminating at a lake. It is public right of way. It is sometimes a parcel and it is a public access easement. Uh, as Mary and Jason both just summarized, uh, the original 2009 study actually included fourteen total sites on four lakes. And the 2022 study that was adopted in 23 included twelve total sites on four lakes with, uh, an updated priority matrix that we'll discuss at the, through the end of this presentation from the priority matrix that was included in the study. So here's a map of all of the sites on the left-hand side with the sites, uh, numbered in red on four lakes, starting at, uh, Lake Silica, Westlake Avenue, going counterclockwise around each lake. And they're in numerical order, which matches the 2009 numerical order. And we'll just be referencing that same numerical order, uh, throughout this presentation. You'll note that site number seven, which is Edgewater Park, was omitted from the 2022, 23 study.
Okay.
And Lakeland, uh, was also excluded, uh, which was previously site number fourteen in the 2009 study. So some of the program goals, uh, for the schematic design and the proposed development of these sites were to improve public access and specifically water access, improve livability in the community and diversity of recreation at these sites, encourage environmental stewardship, uh, improve ADA access. So a minimum of one site per lake was proposed to accommodate accessible parking, uh, where feasible and access to the lake shore. Improve views to the water, uh, account for neighborhood impacts, improve walkability within the community. The designs were, uh, approached from a crime prevention through environmental design, health practices, and wayfinding and signage was included as well as, uh, promoting equity for the user groups. So conservative, these are some principles that were, uh, included in the schematic designs. Conservative development, including low maintenance and native landscaping, a parking strategy where feasible and preserving all the existing trees on site, uh, minimizing impacts to the surrounding neighborhood and street use, including fencing or buffers, uh, to define the sites. As I mentioned previously, one, uh, accessible site per each of the four lakes and crime prevention through environmental design principles. Uh, we also accounted for bicycle parking, low-impact shoreline development, signage, um, improve water access, site furnishings, assumed, uh, partial encroachment resolution. And to clarify, we did not, uh, there were no surveys. This was all based on GIS data and site analysis in the field and aerial photography. So starting with Lake Silica, uh, there were six sites along Lake Silica. And we'll start with Westlake and just review the previous analysis of the existing conditions and then site by site, go through the proposed design development. Westlake Avenue, um, was the site that ADA parking and access was proposed to the lake shore. There was current community apparent use through, the bottom picture shows kind of a, uh, bushwhack trail to the lake edge. And there were some existing, um, picnic chairs on the lake shore from the community. There are minimal trees on the site and minimal slope. So there's, uh, potential open views if the vegetation is cleared. There was no apparent encroachment and the site was fairly large at approximately sixty-two feet of lineal shoreline. So here's a view of the site plan. Uh, we have this blue kind of water droplet graphic, which is really a kind of language for development. It's an identifier for the street ends with an entry plaza on most sites. And there's a switchback trail down to, uh, an improved beach with a small picnic seating area. The trees on the plan that are faded as shown in this graphic are existing and preserved and really minimal, um, landscape, low maintenance landscape with opening up few sheds to the water from the street end, uh, with a native meadow and then low landscape buffers to, uh, encourage positive use with the neighboring residences. Site number two, Mount Tacoma Drive, had some moderate apparent encroachment with some landscaping. There was minimal slope to the shore and on-street parking throughout the neighborhood was apparent. This is a little narrow, narrower site at twenty-eight lineal feet. Here's the proposed design. And on each of these designs, the hatched area, as you can see in this kind of half-circle shape on the bottom of the plan, is to denote apparent encroachment. That might be private landscaping, it might be a structure, a fence, uh, could be a building. Those areas aren't, uh, defined by a survey, but they were just defined by field observation or aerial photographs. So this is a very similar layout, uh, with a passive use and a switchback trail to an approved beach. Site number three, Beach Lane, uh, there was some on-street parking in the right-of-way in the adjacent neighborhood, a moderate apparent encroachment with, uh, private residential garden, uh, landscaped areas. You can see in the photograph here, fairly open views to the water, minimal slope and about thirty feet in shoreline distance. Again, a similar entry plaza. I should mention each of the entry plazas include bicycle parking and some vertical signage as well to denote, uh, public access. There's some proposed trees to, uh, expand upon the buffer between the southern neighborhood, the southern residents and some apparent encroachment that's shaded along that side yard. Uh, there, some of the sites have, uh, beach access that's level and sloping from the, uh, pathway. And some, including this site, includes some steps or retaining walls, just given the grade of the site. Site number four, Lake Avenue, uh, again, on-street parking throughout the adjacent community. Uh, as you can see in this picture, it was a rainy day when we went out and Uh as you can see in this picture, it was a rainy day when we went out and there was some runoff um. From the street for for stormwater. So. Daylighting uh stormwater swell was addressed on site uh due to that observation. There was some significant apparent encroachment. Open views from the street end to the water, moderate slope and the site was, has a curving shoreline, which was about eighty eight feet. So here's that site plan with the encroachment hatched on the north side of the plan. And the daylight storm swell running along the north side of the plant from the street end to the lake shore to divert the runoff. With the entry plaza down to an approved beach. And there are some retained existing significant trees that are the lighter symbols along the southern property boundary. Site number five, One Hundredth Street, there's some on-street parking in the community and there was significant encroachment, including. A carport. I know this uh particular site has come up recently on city council's agendas. Uh this was one of the wider sites, which would support um parking without impact to the. Neighboring residences, moderate slope, uh significant tree canopy on this site and the shoreline is about eighty four feet. Here's the site plan showing a switchback pathway again to an improved beach with some steps. Step access on a a native meadow bordered by low landscape buffer. Site number six uh was quite a narrow site, the last site on Lake Silicon. There was um the roadway was narrow and there was no apparent shoulder parking within the community. So we had a difficult time. Parking to assess the site. This low timber retaining wall is uh part of some. It's encroachment on the site. And there was no development proposed due to the limited access and width of the parcel. It's only about ten feet wide. Here's a view uh without proposed development, but showing the shaded uh encroachment of. Landscaping and fencing and that retaining wall uh and the width of the site with, between the neighboring adjacent residences. Moving on to American Lake, there are two sites on American Lake, Lake City Boulevard, which is uh just east of. American Lake Park and Wadsworth Street, which is just uh west of Harry Todd Park on the south shore. Lake City Boulevard um current has current community heavy use um due to. Many reasons, one of which the city gets frequent requests for public fishing and American Lake has uh some. Conflicting use of the swimming beach and the public boat launch. So there's really no. Public access on the north shore for public fishing. Uh so when folks call to request that access, we will defer them to this. Street end site, which also has uh current parking. And this was the site on American Lake that had ADA uh access proposed. There was significant encroachment on this site to the south. And uh a public fishing pier is proposed in the development and it's also one of the wider sites at eighty four feet. Here's some additional views of the site. It's fairly open with some existing trees and a a picnic table. And uh the far right photo shows. There's no cars parked there now, but there's some angled uh off-street parking on the shoulder to the left of that. Entranceway, which is just beyond that ivy-covered uh retaining wall. So here's a plan view that shows the parking and believe the same location that it's currently existing. Uh there's a. Switchback system that's accessible that terminates at a fishing pier that's been proposed on a. Um utility plant that is currently the, in the previous slide. Uh located out that folks are using as a natural fishing pier. And there's a small beach on the north portion of the site. We did encounter some record of that uh hatched rectangular space that used to be a boat launch. I'm not sure. How, you know, how far previously that was a boat launch, but it's anticipated there's remains of a boat launch in that area. Site number nine, Wadsworth Street uh has current moderate uh to heavy use. Uh there's a. A boat launch terminating at this site, although narrow, that accommodates access to uh Silkox Island residents annually. There was no parent encroachment at the site and there was some on-street parking uh farther up the hill in the neighborhood. This par- this is defined by a a parcel um. As the only street end defined as a parcel and it's about twenty six feet in size on the the bottom right photo. This is actually adjacent to the parking area for Bill's Boat Hops, for those familiar with that portion of the community.
Actually, that's um a private parking lot for Silkox Island people. Then beyond that, it was open because of the fire that had occurred. So it looked like it was adjacent, but actually for Silkox Island. The parking lot.
So there was minimal uh improvements uh altering the use of the site, but we are proposing to. Repave the launch access with the similar plaza graphic to denote it uh public access. And proposed replacement of some of the, an extension of some of the existing boat launch. With a small landscaped area um to protect the utility poles on the south side of the site. Lake Louise, there are two sites on the eastern shore, Hundred and Fourth and Holden. Hundred and Fourth and Melody Lane is also the only public boat launch uh to Lake Louise. Uh which is to, shown in the photo, just really a gravel pathway down between the fence and this um. Stormwater vault. Their off, on-street parking is difficult in the neighborhood. The boat launch is located on a corner, so it's it's very difficult. Uh and it's designated use as a launch with truck and trailer navigation uh through the site. And there was also significant encroachment noted uh from the plan for this site. There was current noted uh community use. The community had brought their own picnic table and trash. Receptacle to the site to support day use. Here's a plan view of the site showing the encroachment of the adjacent northern residents in the hatched area, really the front landscape. Uh to improve safety of folks using the launch facility as well as pedestrian ass- access to the shoreline. We've separated the pedestrian access around the north side of the stormwater vault to the beach. While maintaining the the launch access along the south side of the property. The second Lake Louise site is Holden Street. Uh this was just very heavily vegetated and there was some significant trees on site. You can see the size of the cottonwood on the shoreline in the picture on the right. There's also an existing stormwater vault on this site and it's a moderate width at forty two feet. There was an existing uh stormwater swale on the site that the neighborhood residents. Appear to be managing. So we've maintained the stormwater management on the site uh along the north edge. With a similar uh switchback trail system to a picnic area and a beach. And this is the Lake Louise site that is accommodated accessible use with a single parking stall. Uh and access to the overlook of the beach at a picnic area. Gravely Lake is the last of the four lakes that we've assessed and there are two street ends on the eastern shore, Hilltop and Linwood Lane. Hilltop, uh as you can see from this picture, is was so heavily vegetated with blackberries. We weren't able to do a physical site assessment uh through the site into the shoreline. But we've assumed based on the topography in relation to Linwood Lane and the tree canopy. There's very similar development potential between the two sites. Uh it's very steep slope uh from the street end to the shoreline and the width is very narrow at about twenty four feet. So here's an aerial view showing how steep the pach- the topography is uh down through the site to the lake shore. Then the last site on Gravely Lake, Linwood Lane, uh was the site we did have some proposed development. There was some moderate encroachment uh mainly through landscaping and I believe a small shed. Uh there was on-street parking available in the adjacent community, a very steep slope and very heavily vegetated with some significant tree canopy. Um due to the slope, there wasn't, this was the site that was picked to have an accessible. Uh improvement, but so it's really inaccessible viewpoint due to the steep slope and the narrow width of the site. We weren't able to accommodate uh lake shore access. So here's a picture of that development with a small plaza. Terminating at a viewpoint just before you get to the really steep portion down the hillside. Uh which really just navigates around the existing tree canopy with timber steps, a series of switchback and timber steps. Terminating at an improved beach. But here were the cost estimates for those sites. There were no cost estimates for Hollyhedge. Lane and Linwood Lane because we didn't have any development that was proposed that we could provide a cost estimate for, but. Uh the cost projections at that time, it was twenty twenty two, were projected to twenty twenty four. At just over three point six million dollars. So some of the pilot project considerations that we discussed with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board were. A feasible development, uh site development and timeline. It should support equitable access and use. Set an example of success, offer the biggest bang for our buck, engage and engage community and future stewards. Uh with the, within the neighborhood and community. So I'm going to go through um on the, on the top criteria category, there's quite a bit of criteria in the matrix. And the very top row uh itemizes the criteria, starting with need, moving to equity, feasibility, use. Costs and then safety and security. So I'm just going to go through each of those metric categories with you uh for all the considerations. So need considered um boat launch improvements and fishing, since those are really two um widely requested amenities for water access. Um existing considered, is there existing developed lake access at that lake for the public? And was there apparent current community use during the site analysis? Equity considers uh it is the site have, does it have accessible uh improvements and parking? We reviewed the median income by census tract and the health and social need ranking by census data. As well as the water quality. This map, so relating to the income, uh we realized that the income is. Is going to be greater and skewed by waterfront properties and that we really have a goal. That open space recreation is walkable within a half mile of the community. So there are some adjacent. Census tracks that have a significantly lower uh median income and we wanted to account for that. Consideration uh because of the the metrics actually include the median income for the census tract at the lake, at the site. So the turquoise areas you can see in the eastern part of the community and adjacent to American Lake have some uh. Significant uh differences in median income. Feasibility considers the apparent encroachment. So as I mentioned, we, there was no site surveys, so that information may change with survey data. And the resolution to those encroachments really has an unknown resolution for uh. The proposed development and an unknown cost and timeline. Use considers uh new value to the site and the expansion of diversity of recreation. Shoreline lineal feet was included because there are multiple points uh that might offer greater development potential. Because it's a wider site and more water access. So there's a higher capacity, potentially a higher capacity use. There's greater habitat and restoration potential as well as less impact to the neighbors due to the ability to provide landscape buffers where feasible. Cost uh takes into consideration the development cost from the cost estimate we reviewed previously. Um these are schematic costs, so very likely these costs could potentially increase. And on the steeper and narrower sites, there may be cons- limited construction access and more significant uh cost increase. And more cost doesn't always mean more benefit. Safety and security, so the crime prevention through envi- environmental design is. Really taking into account the existing trees on the site, which we wanted to maintain as well as the slope and visibility from. The street end through the site to the shoreline. Um clear visibility is really going to promote positive use of the space. Some goal considerations that were not in the metrics were that we'd like to engage the community and future stewards. We want the community to be excited about these improvements. Uh we want to set an example of success for the development of the remaining sites. And we want to get the biggest bang for our buck. So some of these categories were weighted, uh not each of these categories were weighted in the same um. With the same weighting, but the categories that did include weighting were existing lake access. Apparent encroachment, shoreline lineal feet, new use, current use and the fishing pier. So here is a copy of the matrix with all those metrics that we just discussed with the top. Four scoring sites highlighted on the right hand side. Excuse me, here is a summary. That, so this is just in numerical order of the sites, you know, from one to thirteen on the left hand side. And this is just reorganized into the scoring of those sites. So the top scoring site is Westlake Avenue on Lake Silicon. The second site tied uh both at seventeen points, Lake City Boulevard on American Lake. The third site was Wadsworth on American Lake and the fourth site was Linwood Lane on Gravely. So in plan view, that's the street ends map that we reviewed in the beginning, those sites are all circled in red on the left. And the site, they're starred on the right so that you can see the proximity to. Uh existing public open space, which are public parks in the light green. So some supplemental considerations, Wadsworth, um. There was limited change to the current use of that site, but based on the metrics, it it scored fairly highly. Uh we spoke to some residents that live on Silkox Island and actually most folks just. Put their boat in once a year and leave it for the seasons. There wasn't a significant amount of use. From the Silkox Island residents, but they did note uh the launch is also used for male construction. Uh for barge access and dock repair for folks that live all over the lake. Uh the majority of the use by Silicon neighbors was for small fishing boats. And there's a significant uh lack of parking as we noted in the presentation. Um and the perks, there is a perks, about a quarter mile or less proximity to Harry Todd Park, which we've just. In twenty twenty one completed the fishing pier improvements and the public beach access at that site uh for for that community. Some supplemental considerations for Gravely Lake uh is there's no public access. The development potential was minimal due to the steep slope and narrow site. Uh there were potential impacts to the neighborhood. We should consider the the cost versus the experience. There's a significant cost increase for that public lake access. And it was brought up uh previously that there is potential, which we didn't discuss, we've just summarized it, there's potential for. Uh a partnership with Lake Wood Gardens for public access uh to Gravely Lake. So the budget consideration as well that we didn't address in this presentation is the cost estimates were projected to twenty twenty four. And if we were to um start a pilot project in twenty five, we would have to, you know, include cost escalation. To project to the construction year of the project. So in summary, Westlake has the highest potential of success. Uh there's accessible um parking proposed and and lake access. And it's on the west side of Lake Silicon, which is the opposite shore of Edgewater Park. Uh the tide for Lake City Boulevard, uh which also had high potential and was the accessible site for American Lake. Which would also alleviate stress on American Lake during summer use, which we've uh post COVID and during COVID really en- uh encountered a. Capacity issues there at times during the summer months. Although the encroachment is very significant at this site. Uh and then thirdly, Wadsworth uh is located in a high need area, but the improvements. Changes to the current scope were minimal to to limited. So I'm going to pass it back over to uh Jason to address any questions you may have for him or Mary.
So um as you can see, there was a lot of research and conversation and a lot of criteria that was considered based on best practices. And what we think might be a good um pilot project for. Uh the first street end, actual real street end project. So um. We're happy to answer any of your questions regarding any of the information that you've provided. Um but Jason can probably share with you.
Yeah, ul- ultimately, the Parks Board is recommending uh Westlake Avenue as the the preferred site. Uh you saw there was a tie and there was deliberation on that and it was really circling back to the project goals. And, you know, biggest bang for your buck, supporting that equity access. And really, we got an obligation, this is with the community and 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 their interest in it to to make this first spot successful. And and the Ford's recommendation was was based on on those criteria that's set forth and um. We want this to be successful and um I think we need it to be successful for our community.
I have a couple of questions. I'll open it up, but in terms of uh the recommendation, I know there's a funding component. And I've seen the the estimate of five hundred thousand would be the recommended. Funding for Westlake as proposed. funding for Westlake as proposed. Is that accurate?
That would be accurate. I I think while we were putting the CIP together, um based on the this plan, I think we've actually budgeted four fifty, just because, you know, we're looking at a tight budget for Parks and so um right now it's based at four hundred and forty-four thousand, so but we would just develop the budget that works best for the city and then uh develop the project. This is schematic design, it doesn't mean actually everything that's on there is what's gonna happen. So um but it's the concepts of passive recreation, maintaining trees, getting people out there, so.
Okay, maybe I misunderstood. Did you say fifty or?
Four hundred and fifty.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think that's what we put in the CIP. It'll come to you in uh November or October.
Fair chunk of change for something that
Correct.
Won't be paved necessarily, might have some pavers, so to speak, for whatever, I don't know.
For the pathway down there, yeah.
Is it gonna be gravelled probably?
Anything in front of a shoreline, I mean, we have to go through um a permitting program. There's gonna have to be mitigation anytime you make any kind of change anywhere, so it's a it it's a development, so.
So here's the other sort of qualitative policy question. It's good to have one pilot project to do well to build that trust and confidence, but I guess, based on the input we received over the last few weeks, is there an opportunity to maybe uh spread out the resources so that more around the city have something as opposed to just one pilot project in the next two or three years? In other words, would it take that much money to actually just open up and improve, improve, however you define it, but at least get the shrubs and the bushes, kinda like they did on a hundreds? Could you do that on Gravely and the Linwood Lane one? Could you do it on you know, one of the others, and then maybe have more significant improvement on the pilot project? In other words, say, we're gonna do do the best we can with three hundred thousand dollars on on the first one, and then we'll take up to a hundred on one of the other ones and really kind of expand out the opportunity for access.
Uh my opinion, I think I think that can be a consideration, but I think there's unintended consequences by doing that. And and to me, the unintended consequences is, I'm gonna go back to my roots, and it's maintenance. And the ability to maintain what we're opening up to the public.
Okay.
And that's the concern, taking potentially that route and the unintended consequences. Uh would we like to see as many opened as possible?
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely. Uh but we've got limitations on maintenance, and that's something I've talked to this council about for years.
No, absolutely.
We need to dedicate more money towards maintenance and that upkeep. Um when you've got a dozen people running around, sometimes just not enough bodies to send to this next next issue.
Well, and then on the public safety piece, through environmental design, that's one thing. Um but we often hear that people desire to have some police presence on the body of water. That's another aspect of public safety, so I'm just thinking forward. The first one obviously allows for that because there's a public access on Silicon Lake to help with the Westlake improvement as well as Edgewater. Hypothetically, down the road, if one were to think about doing uh Linwood, I think is the other one that's on the preferred list, really difficult because there's no public access. So how would the police ever get over to Gravely, even if it was desirous to open it up? How would they ever get on Gravely with their little scooter to zip around the water?
Uh well, I I think to be on the lake, they do have access on Gravely Lake if they need to. They've got the, it's so does the fire department. They have relationships because of public safety and
Got it.
water safety. So I think we're really focusing on the water side, the park access or the public access.
Yeah.
And um just to piggyback on on what um Jason said, is is really, it's the um risk management piece, you know, when you start opening those things up, because it is about making sure that it is, if you're gonna if you're gonna open up a site and say, public, please come here and play, view, read book. Um you have an obligation then to do your regular um access inspection, removing
Good point.
this, that, and the other thing. And not that we can't work with our neighbors, you know, we have a great adopted street and things like that. But once you've opened that up and said, please come and stay here, you really have an obligation to
Yeah.
to to really have a higher level of access. Right now, you know, we get a call, there's blackberry bushes, people are playing in the woods, there's a tire in the corner. We'll go and pick things up, you know, because of um calls, but
Mm-hmm.
um except for Lake City Boulevard, um well, Lake Louise a little bit too, it's not on necessarily the regular route, like once a day in the summer, once a week in the winter, so.
And then, I'm sorry to monopolize here, how did the possible uh interlocal agreement with Camp Murray factor into the proposal for American Lake? Because if the Camp Murray Boat Launch gets expanded, that would be one that alleviates pressure on American Lake as well, right?
Yeah, Camp Murray is a um considered a rural boat launch right now with fish and wildlife, and um it it would just be another open space access point. It's different than a lake, a street end, you know, it would be really a facility that would be uh similar to the American Lake Boat Launch in the fashion that it'd be a paved surface, you'd have access, you'd have parking, there'd be a restroom, those kinds of things. So it it's gonna be a significant um improvement, I mean, even if it's in a rural station. So we didn't really consider that because it's really, you go outside, then you come back in, so it's just, it's not a street end. So they really focused on the street end elements versus
Yeah, not necessarily.
Yep, no, it's not apples to apples, right? I get it. Yep, appreciate that.
But to me, any lake access is welcome, wanted, needed, and if you do Camp Murray,
Yeah.
um there's the potential that that then reduces maybe some of the pressure that's currently on the street ends.
Absolutely. Okay. Other questions? Mr. Bokey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So um thank you for this, very, very thoughtful work. Lake City Boulevard already heavily used, I think you mentioned in in um so we'll get to it eventually, I guess, because people are already using it. Um encroachment at site is significant, and it looks like it includes shoreline in your thatched model.
We'll just go back.
It was, we knew about the driveway, but then there's shoreline. So what is your, did you discuss anywhere in your deliberations how you would deal with this encroachment?
Well, encroachment is encroachment. It's public property currently challenged to be used, so it would, we really just talked about. You can see the development ideas aren't included, um but it would have to be addressed once, you know, the city, as we know, doesn't go around looking for encroachment, and we don't trip over it, but once you're gonna start doing something, building a road, uh building a park, that's when we typically um address that in a in a real manner. So uh we can't give a gift of public funds, so at some point, we'd have to figure out how, what the solution is to that, and so we didn't really come up with that. Um because
And to clarify too, apart from the shoreline, it just, what's shaded on the bottom left is actually the primary driveway access and a retaining wall down into uh an enclosed garage for that residence.
Okay, and I, so you didn't, okay, so you didn't really have discussions surrounding?
Just that it's got, had has encroachment, we know it'd be more challenging to develop. Although it's a great site, there is the potential for ADA access. Uh we really just looked at apples to apples to apples. So the fact that there was encroachment added a point system, and so that came out um.
Yeah, it was part of the matrix. That 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 criteria was part of the matrix.
So when you consider
The problems of encroachment during this process, we just recognize that it's a challenge that has to be addressed, whatever that means.
So when you gave us the width, did the width include the area of encroachment?
I think it did, didn't it?
Yeah.
Of the shoreline?
Tell me just the shoreline width.
I didn't get the
They gave us a width, I'm wondering if it's the shoreline.
We can follow up on that for you.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure we did, but we'll follow up just to confirm.
Thank you. Anything else? Oh, Mr. Brand Center and then Mr. Pearson.
Okay, um. Yeah, this is, thank you for doing what we asked. Okay, you know, when we uh received the concept report uh now, y- y- you know, over a year ago. Okay, and and do that, and we looked at it and we said, Yes, sir. we can't do all of these all at once. And the the concept report was, is is very thorough, and it sort of is a report to took at each site and sort of to maximize what you could do to maximize usage. That um, you know, it it took it it took note of en- of of encroachments and other barriers, but it also identified the fact that there were some some sites that were already being used, okay, and could got to go on. And what the, we did as a council, we gave some guidance that said we wanted to do a project project in the next biennium, twenty-five, twenty-six, based on the concepts. And so, you know, I think that in following that guidance and that decision, we've already taken some aspects to identify dollars, um uh upper dollars to be able to go and do that. And um, you know, the 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 timeframe is right, and if uh, you know, if 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 Westlake is your recommendation, I think that we're prepared to go and do that. The other thing, though, in that, the 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 other s- s- thing that has to do with reality, and it relates somewhat to what the mayor said, is um we've had the benefit of a great deal of public conversation and input regarding street ends, okay? And that, well, the concepts of a finished version of a street end is uh um is desirable and is even a long-term end goal. If you were to just do each of those one by one, it would take us thirteen bienniums. Uh and 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 I think that there there were a couple of things, first of all, that the council heard. And the council heard is that um we don't necessarily need on all of these street ends that are open-up-able. Okay, is that even a word? Okay, uh but 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 that um that they can be opened up with primarily some vegetation control and making it accessible through walking to be able to go and do that. And there is significant discussions about access to just get to, be at, and see, and perhaps launch non-motorized watercraft such as kayaks or inboards to be able to go and do that. And that we saw that those, that that even on a site that could have a long-term term concept plan, that uh there's there's some desire on the public to open up the ones that uh with in that limited manner to be able to go and do that. And that can be done through an adopt-the-spot program like we have at Primley Park, where we we some of our maintenance at Primley Park is done, where there's an agreement. It could be done with uh another of groups that would wanna look at where we would do some minimal things and and have a site. And you you know, the problem with 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 shoreline is that you have to train a group that adopts a spot to be able to adhere to 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 all of those things. And I think we can, uh as the mayor could said, that we can follow the recommendations and and spend the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, say, in this C- in a CIP to do a complete job on one, which would be an example towards to to those over there, but also that we can look at having some money to do some um initial and then maybe some ongoing vegetation maintenance that 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 allows for some access on the other. There's another thing that the council has done in the interim, since we asked you for this recommendation. And that's what we did with with respect to the comprehensive plan. And in the comprehensive plan, uh we said that, you know, we didn't wanna lose any shoreline. Um but we said that on public property that is uh i- i- whether it's street ends and is in vicinity of shorelines, we wanted to make efforts to res- begin to resolve encroachments. For the fifteen years that I've been on the council, we've only worked to resolve encroachments in kind of crisis mode, when there is, when when some real problem. We didn't systematically go out and talk to about what we could do about encroachments with neighbors. I mean, there are neighbors, okay? It's our our land, and then we have neighbors, and then and there is some encroachment and uh encroachments happen for a variety of reasons, and and are were were allowed to happen for a variety of reasons, mostly well before cityhood to do that. And that there are ways to resolve encroachment without losing shoreline, or even the access to shoreline to be able to go and do that. But I think this is a piece of policy work that the council has to do to decide how do we wanna go to do that, and maybe eventually put together some money to begin to resolve encroachments to be able to 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 go and do that, similar to where we have a an economic development fund or something. Maybe we we look at putting some money towards that. So I think moving forward with the 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 Westlake Project uh is uh is is a direction that that we sort of gave you our, an intent to go and do, and I appreciate the recommendation. I'd be supportive of it. That uh I think that um, but we also would want to get to not just do that to the exclusion of being able to do minor improvements that that a- actually make significant enhancements to access at some, at at some neighborhood locations. Um you know, and that includes a hundred street and Lake uh Lake Avenue. I think uh Wadsworth is actually being fairly well-used, and anything that we would do there is, wouldn't really in- 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 increase uh th- th- that use. Uh I I think in a future biennium, uh you know, Fishing Pier is a capital project at Lake City Boulevard, okay, and that's uh, that's not the twenty-five, twenty-six thing, it could 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 move forward. Um that there are some things that, the other thing I think is that wasn't really significantly considered because we tried to look at how to make these street ends all be perhaps be be potential access. And you know, um one use of shoreline is conservation. And it may, there are some, a couple of these sites that maybe it's not a question of making them accessible to people, and I, you know, uh, yeah, I I I I think about maybe Hilltop uh as as one, but that we just go in and we take a look to make sure that that shoreline is being u- in that area is being used, and that it's good habitat, and that it's healthy for the lake and being able to go and do that. You know, in the shoreline master program, we've got several criterias of things, okay, you know, and uh maintaining those, like, similar to how we're working with Pierce County to maintain the Chambers Creek shorelines, to be able to go and do that. And so you, to look at it in that way of not trying to do them all. So I think um I I think the 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 Westlake recommendation is a is a is a solid one. Uh I think to do a complete concept plan. I think that that, but there are a number of others wherein the twenty-five, twenty-six biennium, we can come to adopt the site agreements, preliminary vegetation control, and some things with the shoreline that will make them begin to be used more by the public, because many of them are already used by people who make a great deal of effort to 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 use them, uh to be able to go and do that, and we've and we've seen that, that that that's going on. Um and that we um, you know, you know, take, but that we follow through with our intent in the comprehensive plan to not lose shoreline, to make the best uses of shoreline that are there, but to begin to proactively resolve existing encroachments and prevent any new encroachments. Um and uh and that we do that, it's good neighbors with the with the folks uh folks that 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 are there. Um you know, these um folks that, that, that are there, um, you know, these, um, and that sort of changes the, the guidance that we gave you earlier before somewhat, okay? Which I think is, we'll think about it and when we next have our next joint meeting, you know, where we discuss the work plan and, and things to do that, you know, we can, can move, move forward with that. But I do think that the, uh, you know, you, you, you've done a, a, a worksmanlike job of trying to come up with one concept plan to implement. I think you, you've come up with a, with a, with a, with a very viable, viable choice that you're recommending to us. And it, it happens that we have found the money to do, to do one. So the fact that it's one of the more expensive ones doesn't, i- isn't, uh, uh, that big of a problem, um, you, you know, it's, it's, um, and, and you can't do things and I, I think Lake Silicon is, is one of the lakes with a great deal of interest about access and, uh, to, to try to get something on the west side is, uh, developable and the, the fact that we've got a, got a site that where can, can won't have development slowed by encroachment issues. It's, that, that's a place to get started while we also in other places get, get started on the, on the, on the encroachment issue. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm certainly in looking to support in the upcoming budget to the, the recommendation that's made here.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, a couple of the scoring criteria that I just want, the proposed boat launch, you know, being a zero or a one, I feel like that's a big deal. Um, and I was expecting that to be more of a, providing more of a delta when you were scoring something to improve a boat launch versus nothing. So from it being just a zero to a one. For instance, the new fishing pier, you know, the delta between zero, it was a zero or a two. So, and I feel like a, a boat launch is at least that kind of similar delta. So I don't know how that would impact the scoring, but that was one of the scoring things that I didn't quite understand. And then just when I look through all of these and see which ones, you know, would be really nice to get some improvement on, uh, I was surprised that the Lake Louise, um, off Melody Lane there didn't score better. That to me, there's some decent space. It narrows down at the water, but it does get a lot of use and to be able to provide a, a more usable boat launch there, I feel like would go a long ways. And, and so the scoring there on that one, I, I thought that that would, would bump that up a bit. Um, if there was a, a larger delta on the, on the boat launch improvement there. The other thing, as far as the scoring goes with some of these being a bit more feasible or, and really getting, you know, you're getting a, a, a larger improvement, kind of, you know, more impactful improvement. The, the, the rating or the scoring on, you know, I feel like if you have fifty, sixty, eighty, a hundred linear feet, I mean, that's a sizable chunk of real estate that you can really get people into and using like more than just two people sitting on a bench. So I, I'd like to see, you know, maybe the, the linear footage break down different or, or adding another category for if you're, you know, if you're between thirty and fifty, it's one. But what, you know, once you go over fifty or over sixty and you start getting these really wide shoreline, uh, street ends, that, that, that there's a higher, you know, point value on that because that, that's really a, a sizable chunk of real estate that, that you can get a lot of people in at. So I feel like, you know, the difference between that and like a fifteen, you know, the Hollyhedge or anything, you know, some of these twenty, thirty footers where they're really kind of challenging to do much besides just have a bunch of paths zigging, you know, zigging and zagging down. And to, to Mr. Brandstetter's point about, you know, determining which ones would be better suited for environmental protection. Some of those ones where it's more narrow and you're just putting pathways back and forth the whole way down. You know, you're clearing out a lot of vegetation and that's, you know, so kind of how does that, you know, go into the scoring there on that? And then the one other one was ADA access and parking. And I just wasn't sure, is that ADA access pathway and ADA parking? Or are those, you should have normal parking that you can just pull off and it's not an ADA stall, but it's just parking. And then you have an ADA pathway down. Is that?
Yeah, regarding the ADA, just to, to answer that question. The reason for that was is because of the narrowness or the steepness that we knew we couldn't make everything ADA accessible. So for accommodation purposes, which is by law, we have to provide accommodation if we're making an improvement, is that we would look at make, making sure that one site per lake would, had the, had ADA parking so that if you had mobility, you could get there and had a little bit more, um, detail to make it accessible. Some of its, uh, a couple of them, I think it was just to a view spot, could really only get accommodation to a view spot. And a couple of other ones, you need a little more zig and a little more zag to get to the shoreline. So that was put in there just as a, a, a goal was to make one area per lake accessible. So when you only have a couple on each lake, then that's a little bit more of a challenge than when you've got six that you can kind of pick from.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, I, I appreciate all the work you guys did on this. I think this is something that's more manageable and, you know, give us some, some, something to actually look at to, to evaluate the different sites against each other and see where they, where they sit. Um, yeah, the, the one other thing would be the environmental, um, you know, concerns that I'd probably want to see added to the, to the matrix. Um, and, and determining how, you know, how we're protecting some shoreline areas versus improving others. Or, you know, if, if that's the goal is to improve them all, um, you know, that's kind of counterproductive to some of the, uh, a lot of the shoreline, you know, regulations and some of our, some of our goals in the comp plan. So, um, that's my comment. Thanks.
Very good. Councilmember Laura Sello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, and thank you guys for coming in. I really appreciate all the work that the advisory board has put in as well as city staff. Uh, first off, full disclosure, I live on one of the street ends. So, uh, just want to make sure that that, that is known. Um, but as an engineer, I really appreciate a, a good weighted decision matrix. So, uh, you guys did a good job there and I think, I think the, the weight you put to each piece makes sense to me. And I think the end result of, uh, putting Westlake at the top as a result of that is, is solid and I appreciate it. Uh, one thing I would consider, uh, building on what the, the mayor suggested and what Councilmember Brandstetter mentioned is what I consider a minimum viable access. So what does that look like in terms of a trail or just clearing some vegetation? Understanding that we would have to have some allocation of recurring funds for maintenance for that sort of thing. So what that would look like, I'm not sure. Uh, and maybe, maybe it's de-scoping this first access to enable a couple of more accesses uh, on this first launch. The other thing to consider that I, I thought is after we, after we build out the first one, that likely changes the scoring of the other ones on the lists, right? Due to some of the, the waiting and the matrix that's there. So we'd have to re-score after each build. And then last thing, looking at, uh, Lake City Boulevard and Wadsworth, we currently have three developed accesses on American Lake, uh, including two boat launches and one fishing pier. I don't know that we necessarily need to build out more of that before increasing our access and decreasing the load on the existing accesses on Silicon Lake and looking at gravelly as well. So, and the last thing is, do we have, have, have we looked at grant opportunities for this sort of work from the city?
Was the question, um, how competitive would some of these be for grant types of?
Yeah.
I think for the small neighborhood, street end, um, they're not going to be very competitive because they're very limited access. They have minimum improvements to them. Something like a Lake City Boulevard would definitely be, um, more of a competitive one because of the nature of, um, the ability to do some things there that would be getting through the encroachment. Uh, I would say, uh, Lake Louise as well. The biggest problem you have is that big old utility, you know, you, the vault that's there. To be able to get around it, you'd really have to take care of all that encroachment on the other side, which we've recognized. Um, so just because, but again, it's a smaller lake. It's not going to serve as many people. So typically it's either a very, to be grant eligible, very underserved area. That's why we've been very successful in places like Silicon, um, very underserved area. Some diversity of recreation gives you more points. So the bigger bang you can get for the more activities on a certain spot. Um, but there are some boat launch grants. Their whole purpose is to create access onto the water. Some boat launch grants is a grant is specifically for non-motorized types of experiences. Some boat launch grants are just for gas-operated vehicles. So you kind of have to look at the site and decide what's going to be most competitive. But just, um, summarizing is something that's a little smaller, neighborhood focus, not much to it, but a bench and a couple of trees, um, it's not going to be very competitive from a statewide grant program.
Okay. Are gas-powered boats allowed on Lake Louise? I'm not sure.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One comment that I forgot to mention, um, so I hear kind of some comments from three, uh, the council members about spreading out the wealth and, you know, kind of doing some, yeah, I don't know, you know, there's some different words you can describe it with some, a, uh, some lesser improvements uh, in, in other areas. And what comes to mind is, you know, we already have challenges with maintaining our shorelines. You know, you look at Edgewater, there, people are screaming at us, why can't we maintain Edgewater and the shoreline? And now we're talking about potentially, you know, kind of doing some halfway, a third, you know, quarter way improvements in these other places, but let's just, you know, do some more maintenance. And it's like, uh, I was always taught, if you're going to do something, do it right, right? So, you know, let's, let's do something and do it well and set ourselves up for success rather than kind of do something not so great. And, and now we're, we're maintaining it all the time. It's like buying an old car, you know? It's like, oh, this is great. It was cheap, you know? And it's going to get me a point A, point B until it starts breaking out a bunch and you start having all this maintenance. And now it's like, ah, this is like a pain. I don't want to deal with this. We're dealing with this all the time. And so I would just exercise caution on going that route with, you know, spreading the wealth, so to speak, on, on multiple street ends rather than the systematic approach of, of doing one, doing it well. It, you know, we're not going to get to them in a, as quickly, but they'll be nicer and we won't have to spend nearly as much time and effort maintaining them if we do them correctly versus, you know, kind of going and cutting some blackberries that are going to go right back. And, you know, now people have to, we have to hope that we can get people to come in and clean them and, you know, uh, try to maintain them as best we can. And then they're all overgrown and, you know, we're back to square one and we just wasted time and money and, you know, for what? So.
Let me at least circle the wagons because I think we deserve, the parks staff deserves some consensus on a path forward, so to speak. So the recommendation is to, uh, improve Westlake Avenue uh, to a, uh, more fuller, robust, if you will, lack of a better term, improved street end akin to what we've seen with the schematics. Do we have at least consensus on that? Move forward. And then budget dependent, it seems to me, I hear that there may be some value in if we have five hundred thousand ARPA funds, we put three fifty, four hundred, four fifty into Westlake, we'd have fifty to do some meaningful commencement of vegetation removal. Maybe to the point where you could get a, adopt a street program by some adjacent neighbors to kind of maintain it. Seems to me we've already started with Edgewater. Uh, it would be nice to see, you know, we've been talking about some of the interim remediation of all the blackberries for some time. Is it even possible that we could take fifty grand, twenty grand? Heck, I'd do it for fifty grand. I'll bring it.
All those blackberries were cut, were cut down last summer. It was open and that's just what grows up in a year. So.
Dig them out or something?
Until you're going to replant it and change Mother Nature's access. I'm not saying that we can't. I'm just saying that I know we keep talking about that big wad of blackberries that's right there. These were all, those are all down, uh, last summer.
Yeah.
But you really have to pull it out, grab it and put in a bunch of native plants so that it, you change what's growing there. So, um, and that's the plan for that site.
Got it.
As well.
What about, uh, if you could put fifty grand towards, say, Linwood Lane? Do the interim cleanup a little bit to enable maybe neighbors who were interested to keep it clean and open? Kind of an adopt a street end project.
I think what I heard council tell us is, is that there's consensus for Westlake. So that's great. We can move forward with that.
Yep.
I think what we'll need to do is, um, I don't know how much it would cost if it would be what you could do for fifty thousand, one site or ten sites. But I think one of the things we really have to do is talk with community development regarding what can you do on a shoreline area regarding, um, what's considered, um, allowable, what's a cleanup versus development.
Right.
Right. So, um, we would, well, we can gather some additional information and then bring it back during budget or, or maybe next year when we're talking about more of the implementation of the work plan. Um, or if you wanted to see some modifications to the scoring in some fashion. Uh, and then we'll have a better idea. Yeah.
Let's move forward with Westlake.
Yeah, that's what I heard. And then we can go back with some more details regarding maybe what some of the other ideas could be for just, you know, getting a cow path down to the shoreline.
Yeah.
Safe.
Yeah.
And we don't want to create an unsafe neighborhood.
Absolutely. No one wants that, neighbors or visiting neighbors. Did you have anything else, Mr. Brandstetter? Okay, very good. Well, thank you. We appreciate all your work. And Jason, thanks to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board for all their good work on this. It's been, it's been, uh, a long road, shall we say.
Sure. Your comments are marvelous. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, that concludes the items for discussion for tonight's study session agenda. Those items tentatively scheduled for the October seven regular council meeting are set forth on your agenda for tonight. And now we'll turn to reports by the city manager.
I'm breaking things left and right. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Uh, just a few updates for you. Um, most of my updates here this morning, I'm sorry, this evening are around the area of transportation projects. So, um, Hipkins, um, the major improvements were completed, uh, late last week. And so the roadway is open, though there is ongoing punch list items. For example, raising the utility covers and things like that. And then striping will be occurring later on, um, in, in, in the fall. But, uh, the road is open and it looks absolutely fantastic. I have driven it a few times. Um, and, uh, I will say that, um, I think the traffic calming, that from my perspective anyways, um, is, is working, uh, cause, uh, um, just driving behind people and people driving behind me, it's been, um, much slower than how it has been in the past. Um, also, uh, Interlock and Bridge is moving along. It is expected to open this Thursday, um, the twenty-sixth. And, uh, matter of fact, our staff was out there last week. So if you go out there, you'll see that the striping has already been done and such. So our crew actually went out and did that. So right now the, the contractor is just finishing up, um, a handful of items. And again, the goals, I don't think they did any repaving. They might've done some patching, but, um, but, uh, the road is, um, I'm sorry, the bridge will be open. And, uh, also we are going to maintain this, I think it's six-ton limitation on it, which is what it has been in the past. Uh, we want to let the bridge settle and see what happens there. So.
Yeah.
So as, uh, we look out into the future, uh, there are six projects that are going to be looking to bid out and for council consideration to award contracts between now and really the end of the year. Uh, the first is the traffic signal at Ninety Second and South Tacoma Way that was, uh, funded with a TIB grant. So we're hoping to advertise in October and then council consideration in November. However, the project will not get away, get underway until at least the spring because it will probably take six to eight months for the traffic signal to, um, be ordered and then be manufactured. Um, the supply chain issues associated with street lights and traffic signals and things like that, there's a, a long delay. So the sooner we can get the contract awarded, the sooner a contractor can actually place the order for it. Uh, the next one is a major overlay. Uh, the next one is a major overlay on South Tacoma Way from Ninety Sixth to, uh, Silicon Boulevard, again, funded with a P S R C grant. Looking to advertise that in October and then award in November, though the work, since it is a paving project, we're gonna wait until after the winter. And so the paving will occur in the spring and then like we normally do with these major paving projects, that will occur in the evening hours, um. When it's, uh, nice and slow, we won't be doing it like during rush hour and such. Um, the next one is Silicon Boulevard from Eighty Seventh to Weller, or Eight Weller to Eighty Seventh, which is essentially the entrance of Fort Silicon Park as well. Looking also to advertise that in October and. Um, and some of these projects, by the way, we're waiting on washout approval because it involves grants, uh, that come through the state. And, uh, so looking to award a contract in the November, early December timeframe, um, that project will get away, um, into the winter time. And then is expected to be completed probably, probably this time next year, uh, late summer of two thousand twenty five.
Project?
Say again.
Is that an overlay?
No, that's, uh, curves, got our sidewalks, streetlights, stormwater and, um, pavement.
Okay.
And pavement, yeah.
My only question on that, John, is the impact to the significant construction of Western State Hospitals, that can be just a nightmare for everybody?
Um, well, the, the construction, I, I don't think so. I mean, it's.
They gotta get through there though, to the hospital, right, for all their trucks and whatever to do.
Everybody does, so, I mean, yeah, so, but, uh, yeah, the project will, yeah, I mean, it's, the, the good news, it's a straight line. Um, one of the things is, um, we'll be taking down the traffic light at Briggs, uh, to allow for a smoother movement of traffic as well. During the construction, during the construction. Um, next one is South Tacoma Way, the last segment of South Tacoma Way from Eighty Eighth, um, to Eightieth. And likewise, advertising in October, bidding in, no, I'm sorry, contract. Award hopefully in, in, in November and then that will be under construction the same time as Silicon Boulevard. Uh, and again, it'll probably be completed, you know, latter part of next summer or so. Again, big project.
Total amount roughly?
Um, I don't have that on my.
Ten million at least.
It's about, I think it's about four and a half million dollars, I recall. And two and a half million is funded with a federal grant that Congresswoman Strickland was able to secure for us. Um, another sewer project, Wadsworth, uh, Silkox, uh, Boat Street Sewer Extension. So looking to advertise that in about the December timeframe with council consideration of a contract, maybe in December, but most likely in January. Um, and then, uh, the last project that's ready to go, that's finishing up design is Idlewild and One Twelfth. Um, which is also from Interlock into Idlewild and looking to advertise that in January. And then, um, hopefully council consideration for a contract in February and then that'll be underway in the springtime. So that's kind of where we are with the projects that are in the queue and then, um, uh, we have a number of projects that are currently under design that then will be advertised. And bid out in the spring and summer of, of next year as well, so moving along quite nicely. Um, also wanted to let you know, our, um, um, our, uh. New Planning and Public Works Director, him and his team, they applied for a grant with the Department of Commerce for a. Either an upgrade or even a new permitting system, permitting software system for the city, we weren't sure how we would do. Um, we actually did so well, they awarded us the grant for two hundred and forty thousand dollars. So we are now looking at options and alternatives and what we can do to spend that money. And so we're probably gonna go through, actually, we're gonna go through an R F P process to see what's out there. Um, and this is being generated by new state laws that relates to, um. Permitting permits, reporting of permit timelines to the state, um, it's Senate Bill fifty-two ninety. So, um, looking at, um, looking at some options there, not quite sure where it's gonna go, um, but again, we're gonna do our due diligence and. And see where, and see where it leads. And then, um, lastly, just as it relates to your calendar, um, tomorrow evening is, uh, desserts on the driveway over in, uh, the Lake City neighborhood. The former elementary school, which is eighty-eight hun- eighty-eight hundred, one twenty-first Street Southwest. And then Partners for Parks is having a fundraising event this Saturday over at Fort Silicon Park and do understand it is a ticketed event. So you'll need to go to their website. Um, and then this time next week, on Monday, we will have a little mini retreat as it relates to your state, federal and county legislative agendas, so. We'll have our team here to speak with you about. Recommended priorities, um, at the local, state and federal level. So with that, that's my report.
Questions, Mister Branstad?
Yes, Mister Caulfield, um, with respect to the, uh, Interlock and Bridge. And we're going to reopen it with a six ton weight restriction? Is that what I heard you said, say?
Correct, council member.
Okay, and was. What was the weight restriction at the time we closed it?
Six tons. I think it was, no, actually, I think it was a little less than that. Have to go back and check.
So, so six tons is still okay for school buses?
Oh, yeah.
And trash?
Yeah, in ways, that's correct, yeah.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Depends how much the kids have eaten for lunch that day. Quick question for you on construction projects and design, so Nyanza, I know that, I think when I was on vacation, you guys did a charade or at least looked at the design. For Nyanza?
Yeah, that's correct, Mayor.
So, one resident sent me a copy of a letter he received in the mail from a right of way agent saying, hey, I wanna give you a chat and talk to you about this. So I didn't realize we were looking potentially at take, or is it just for the roundabout?
It was a roundabout and that was something we covered, tiny, tiny little sliver.
Okay. That's very good. That's just for the roundabout section, right?
That's correct.
Got it, okay, very good. Any other questions? Great, well, thank you very much, appreciate it. Oh, um, we'll get around to council comments, but. Um, we're gonna ask a little bit about a follow up on the, um. Arts Commission's request to see if we can come up with twenty-five hundred bucks or so somewhere, somehow to help fund one initial acquisition of the current exhibit.
Okay, so.
Uh, we'll go around, I mean, do we have some consensus to direct the manager to try to find some shekels if he can for that purpose?
So, when, when you said twenty-five hundred dollars.
That was a recommendation.
I guess I, I, I thought they were looking for like twenty-five hundred dollars a year. Because they had tend, they tend to have four exhibits a year per piece.
Up, up to, they said that the max.
I, 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 I'm, you know, that's. You, when we start down their road, then we need to consistently do it exhibit after exhibit after exhibit. Okay, um, twenty-five hundred seems. A lot. And again, I'm not a, an appraiser of art, so to, 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 to do that, but occasionally we have had. Pieces of art that have been in those exhibits that have had a price on them and I don't recall anything, ever seeing anything that approached that. Price. Um, so, you know, you know, I guess I would like the city manager to. As he, as he crafts next year's budget to do that, but if we want, if we're specifically talking about wanting to acquire a particular piece. From this one. I, I, I guess so, although it could, if, if, can, can that be a next biennial sort of thing over there and, and, and let's budget. For, for a series of four pieces or in, in, in twenty-five and, and in twenty-six. Uh, as opposed to doing it exhibit by exhibit, I, I, I think it's easier to budget. Uh, biennial amounts and, and then the Arts Commission can then. Use whatever that total is to help themselves negotiate. The costs or.
Or sponsor.
Or, or negotiate with themselves as to which piece to select.
Yeah, no, good point, fair point. Councilmember Bell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, I agree with most of that, that, yes, definitely, it's something they should budget for. And I do think that the Arts Commission should put some parameters about the city's art collection, so that, and I think. You know, putting this type, but I think that the price is very much on point. I work with the city that we have a art collection and it's very large, it's very robust, but we've been working on it for a number of years. And those pieces are curated and each art show, something is bought, I think that that price is a good. Starting point, is a really good piece to, you know, you may spend as much as that, but you may not depending on what the exhibit is. But, and then another thing that I like about it is that, um, the public, the art that the city that I work at purchases. Um, the public has to be in spaces where they can see that art, so if you have people in your office, things like that, so. They, you know, there's, like I said, there's parameters that go around that, but I think it's a great idea, I would love that to see that it's something that could get budgeted. But I understand what the mayor's saying about a kickoff, just if there was something that we could do to start the process. And I don't think that they were talking about the pieces out there, I believe Ms. Martinez said that she had some larger pieces. That she was considering for that, so, thank you.
Any other comments on that or consensus? Looks like we've got consensus to at least try to budget something for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Um, my recommendation will be to fund it out of the arts budget, um, it's thirty-five thousand dollars right now, my rec, my recommendation until. Two seconds ago was, um, all of it for the continuation of the wraps on traffic signals, but perhaps. What I would probably recommend is allocating a portion of that to buying art and it'll slow down, uh. You'll still be able to do the art, the, the wraps, it just won't be able to do as many.
Yeah, very good, okay, great.
And the reason I say that is because the budget is very, very tight.
Yep, got it. Okay, city council comments, Mister Bokey. Very good, Mister Pearson.
Thank you, Sir Mayor, um, see, some of you at the, or all of you at the. Desserts on the driveway tomorrow and I have, uh. P S R C on Thursday, so.
Very good, Councilmember Bell?
Thank you, Mayor, just make it quick, um, I thought that all the presentations tonight were just really, um, informative and I learned a lot, very insightful. So I always appreciate all the time that staff and that the boards and commissions put into that. Um, and really just keeping us abreast on what's happening and the things that we need to know. And I unfortunately will not be able to make it to the desserts on the driveway tomorrow, it's open house night, so, gotta do that, thank you.
Very good, Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, uh, and thanks to everyone for covering last week for me, uh. I'm happy to be back and look forward to next week when I don't have to wear a mask, that'll be good. Uh, two weeks ago, uh, I got to go to the, uh, new library opening, that was really awesome, it was great to look around inside and. I got to tell some stories about growing up, uh, with the old Lakewood Library and spending my summers there, uh, cause I was a big nerd, which turned me into an engineer, so. Nothing wrong with that. Uh, I'll echo what Councilmember Bell said about the presenters tonight, uh, I really appreciated. The effort that went into everything that was presented, uh, Wes Pierce, uh, I really liked the, uh. The concept of tying the costs to the actual risk and benefit that goes with it instead of just being a, a flat. Percentage of your assessed value, I think it, uh, it makes a lot more sense, so that was, that was really good. Um, other than that, uh, I have the Pierce County Opioid Abatement Council meeting coming up on Thursday that I'll be at. Uh, virtually, and, uh, yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Branstad?
Yeah, Mister Mayor, the Community Services Advisory Board, uh, did receive, uh, twenty-eight applications. For, for funds, uh, they'll be meeting this Wednesday to begin the, the, the process of evaluating them. Uh, it's a few more applications than usual, but it, one of the, uh, unusual things is that there were. Six entities that submitted multiple applications for multiple projects to do that. Whereas in the past, we've, we've sort of limited. Um, them to one and, uh, I think they're gonna discuss whether they're, they're willing to award more than one to any one of those agencies. To, to be able to go and do that, but it has to do with the fact that we have. Those, those five categories and there are some organizations that submitted. Requests in multiple categories to be able to go and do that, so, uh, we'll, 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 we'll see how that goes. Um, yeah, that, uh, I will not be here, uh, for the meeting on October seventh. Uh, to be able to go and do that, but I did note that one of the items on the October seventh agenda is. Number five and it says appointing youth council members to serve on the Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board. And we have historically appointed a member to be the voting member on the Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board. Uh, and we have historically appointed one. If you appoint seven youth council members as voting members on. The Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board, you create both issues about quorum as well as. Um. You may well be making them the ma- the majority. Uh, so I, 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 I would think that it is, 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 as council looks at that on the seventh, that there certainly can be. Um, multiple liaisons from the youth council to be on those boards, but I think in terms of. One or two voting members to be on that board should be, uh, specified as, 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 as to. Who they are or a voting member and an alternate, it would be more consistent with what we've done in the past, even though the youth council is bigger than. This year than it has been.
Very good. Well, briefly, I was the, uh. One of the attendees at the desserts on the driveway event at the Telecombe Community Center last Wednesday with a number of you who were there. What's that? Oh. Were you there? You can be the next one. I thought it was a good conversation, we had a fairly robust crowd there, it was, I think, probably twenty, twenty-four people or so. Uh, good conversation, I, as for the one coming up this week, I have a hard time getting to that one, so I would hope that one of you might be able to take the lead on that. I think it's tomorrow night. Yeah, I didn't realize we were stacking these like, you know, one after the other, uh, so it's a little challenging.
Yeah.
Was that what the?
Yeah.
Rationale was?
And my kids open house.
Are you gonna be ready?
I'll try to be there.
Okay. That's okay, well, we'd kinda like you with the mask.
It's mysterious.
Yeah, it is. Anyone else? Try to do it, I, I just don't think I can make it necessarily, but we'll see how it goes. So if you can be kind of on point, that would be great. Okay, and then, uh, last Friday, I chaired the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee meeting where we. Reviewed about a million and two worth of, uh, applications. The total of all the applications is less than the available money for tourism promotion related activities, so the committee made the recommendation to fully fund. All the requests, so that'll come before you, uh, in a couple of weeks, I think it's not on the October seventh agenda, obviously. So the one thing that I mentioned, uh, a little bit tonight and I'll mention again to you is, you know, you should be really proud of your investments because. There's a lot of good stuff, every group that came before the committee had a PowerPoint presentation, they talked about. What they did last year with the funds and what they plan to do in the next year and, uh, you know, it, it's really pretty. It's pretty awesome what they're doing, especially some of the changes to Lakewood Gardens, so they have the new board members there and the new executive director. Lots of big sustainable stuff, for example, instead of a little bit of, a tiny little light show, they're doing a full fledged. Uh, mini zoo lights there for the holiday season, that'll bring in a lot of people, a lot of other program. Activities that are really gonna bring in a lot of people to Lakewood, which is great, not only for us as a community, but for them for sustainability, it's really gonna be great. Uh, and the same for the playhouse, they're really working hard to up their game. And I would encourage you, if you can, to try to go to their first show, Godspell, they put a ton of heart and effort into it. And it looks like it's really going to be a well-done event, so, yeah, starts next week, so they're really trying hard to kind of. Um, you know, pull out of what was a challenging COVID environment for a lot of arts organizations. And, uh, they're doing good work, so anyway, long story short. Good investments will be made through the lodging tax monies, including all the city events you heard a lot about tonight. And that'll be for you to decide the recommendation approval when it comes forth. That's all I've got for my comments, uh, with P C R C, did you have any comments on that? No, okay, pretty good. Very good, so now we will recess into executive session for approximately twenty minutes pursuant to R C W forty-two, thirty-one, ten, one, G. To review the performance of a public official employee, city council is not expected to take action following the executive session other than to come back out and adjourn. The meeting, so we'll be in recess for about twenty minutes, we'll see you there in about two.